Two other churches have already come to the table. So we opened up, kicked two of those teams in the ring for our third life. But these, I think, were competing. This is going to be a structure program and a footprint. It's going to be about smallish, but it's made up. I mean...
I'll get you some.
How are you doing?
Really good. So, uh, how is the socially distancing department?
Pretty socially distanced.
I try to keep my distance from her too.
Yeah.
It's all...
It's a bit of a mess.
Beauty of living in rather... So what, uh... Yeah, what's happening?
Everything, everything. Not a lot of rough things, but we're, you know, we're trying to do all the things that you told us to do along the way.
Wow. I'm really thrilled about your presentation on the comprehensive list.
Should be a big...
Yeah.
Only if you decide like five percent.
That's great. Just, uh, if you start seeing people try, really, start blazing all over them, the list true.
It's eighteen next year.
You're the master of the group.
This is all...
This will work. My government works.
Why is that? Is that bad?
It's all...
Yes. I'm trying to make it better than I can. I was gonna say, I have a prediction.
Well, they're good, they're good.
No, I know.
I don't think I want to speak, Eric. I have a problem with all this. Usually it's when you have a great project, I mean, we work with it. And by the way, she walked into us in a... But this one comes, okay, relax.
You mean this isn't enough?
Now, they started at school.
Yeah, they did.
Well, you didn't see it on the paper? They had a class or not?
They got a move.
He was first thing.
Oh, my gosh. Before he did a carry.
He is well. She said it's been very... She, and she runs the herd. She is paid. She's a paid group.
Running the group.
Yes. She's a paid group. Oh, that's right, she is a paid group.
Finally, people laugh. You should have... You should know how to smile with your eyes.
Smile. Smile.
Masks are actually good for, like, the wide passes for, you can see it. It's really good, but it's not very good.
Okay, so I have three kids.
Saying is that it's...
I just... Not now, everybody's saying.
Okay.
Now, they started at school.
Yeah, they did.
Well, you didn't see it on the paper? They had a class or not?
They got a move.
He was first thing.
Oh, my gosh. I don't know. Before he did a carry.
He is well. She said it's been very... She, and she runs the herd. She is paid. She's a paid group.
Running the group.
Yes.
That's what I'm getting at, it's just a favor.
Oh, that's right, she is a paid group.
Finally, people laugh. You should have... You should know how to smile with your eyes.
Smile. Smile.
Masks are actually good for, like, the wide passes for, you can see it. It's really good, but it's not very good.
Okay, so I have three kids.
Saying is that it's...
I just... Not now, everybody's saying.
Yep.
We have...
You heard it. I'm like...
That's what I thought.
You really get... Okay.
That's right. She is a paid group.
What? Push his tongue. Finally, people laugh. You should have... You should know how to smile with your eyes.
Smile. Smile.
Masks are actually good for, like, the wide passes for, you can see it. It's really good, but it's not very good.
Okay, so I have three kids.
Saying is that it's...
I just... Not now, everybody's saying.
Yep.
We have... You heard it. I'm like... That's what I thought.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought.
That's what I thought.
That's what I thought.
We have...
You heard it. I'm like... That's what I thought.
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 You said yes, sir.
Yeah.
This one?
David Morgan, weapon.
Morgan.
Morgan.
I got a shirt.
Weapon's worn, glad to have you. Ethan, you need to listen. And, uh, I can sit you straight down. But we'll have to get together.
Take it easy.
You're not listening to anything but to...
So, politician, if that's...
All right, it's a little bit late. We'll go ahead and get started. A lack of welcome everyone to the August meeting of the Bodotac County Board Supervisors. And we've come back out of closed session and make a motion to come out of closed session and say that we have resolved, as best the board members' knowledge, on public business matters, all things that are being required, and only such matters as were identified in the motion to go into closed session, are urged, discussed, or considered during closed session. Second. All in favor, please, dear?
Dr. Gray, any mention?
Yes.
Yes.
The pardon?
Yes.
Doctor Blake?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Clinton if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Please, yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a nation, ungrateful, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. And at this time, we'll have a moment of silence. And I would like to ask if you want to take that time, if you're free, using however you want to, or to ask that you would just keep us in mind, we're bored up here. I would like to ask Lord that he was wisdom and understanding of the issues at hand, so that we can do the best job we can do. So at this time, let's have a moment of silence. All right, thank you. Okay, item number two is recognitions, and I believe, uh, Mr. Morgan, if you would take that. We'll be doing how we got the names.
Good afternoon, uh, him on the board. It's a pleasure being here with you again. This is the time of the year when we recognize service awards for county employees, employees of board supervisors, as well as constitutional offices. And due to social distancing, we've invited employees to attend today if they would like to be recognized in person, but we also have a PowerPoint presentation, photos of employees to be recognized for those who aren't with us today. So we just appreciate the opportunity to recognize the dedication and service of all these folks. We've got a good list of employees ranging from five years of service all the way to four years of service. So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Willoughby, if you all would like to come forward and acknowledge the employees, and certainly appreciate that. And we have a couple to come up with, with photos. No? No, okay. Well, I apologize, we don't have the photos of the employees, and I apologize for that. So we'll go ahead and get started, and if employees are here, if you would, come out front and be acknowledged by the board, we appreciate that very much. So we'll start with five years of service. Jason Crun with Technology Services Department.
My favorite, I see, man. Keep that thing on, what's the year?
We also have Patrick Galton with the Community Development Department. I don't believe he's here today. Gerald Henderson with Department of Fire AMS, not here with us. John Rogers, also with Department of Fire AMS. Andy McDaniel's with Department of Human Resources. Jeffrey Scott with Community Development. And Stephanie Sparks with Community Development, all of five years of service. Next, we have ten years of service. And first, there is Daniel East with Department of Fire AMS. David Lylesh with Recreation Facilities. And Daniel Murray with Department of Fire AMS. With fifteen years of service, we have Doug Anthony with Department of Fire AMS. He's here. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir.
Lisa May in Community Development. And Del Smith with Libraries. With twenty years of service, we have one employee, Sherry Perry with the clerk of Circuit Court's office. With twenty-five years of service, Sharon Clark, also with the clerk of Circuit Court's office. Jacqueline Howard with Libraries. And Sally Wade with Commissioner Robinson's office. With thirty years of service, we have Brad Cannon with Waste Management.
I'm here.
All right. And he's walking in a county shirt that we gave him a number of years ago in recognition of his service.
There you go. Thank you.
And then at last, but certainly not least, with four years of service, is Barry Lou, Secretary, Deputy Clerk, Assistant Deputy Clerk. This was said before.
Thank you. When she started, when she was eleven years old, you know?
Amen.
My recognition, if they're all interested, please.
Yes, and all the employees recognized will get certificates recognizing their year of service as well as checking and appreciating for their service, distributed by their department. And so we certainly appreciate that, advisor Walker joining us today, and thank you for all that you guys for so many years.
Again, thanks for all of you that stood with the county for a number of years. We do appreciate you, and thank you for the hard work that you do. Next, we have Jason Ferguson here. Okay, this is a presentation about a fire original fire gathering, stroke reward. That's not Jason, but that's his partner in crime, right?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, thank you for your, your time today to recognize and celebrate one of our employees who was recognized for outstanding service, Nathan Perlocker, firefighter assigned to the Troutville Firehouse. Nathan served as an instructor, part of our team, or cadre instructors, and assisted with the regional recruit academy. And you had a chance to meet the six fine individuals that were graduates of that program with the last board meeting. Nathan was selected by all of the students in the academy as the outstanding instructor. Represented Bodotac County extremely well. I had the chance to join in on several of his presentations to the academy, and it reflected great credit, not only upon himself as an instructor, but more importantly, on the caliber of service and professionalism of our organization. So with that, I'd like to welcome firefighter Perlocker, if you'd like to offer any words to the board.
Appreciate your time, sir. Appreciate you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
You say you don't make any comments, I guess you spoke enough of the academy. Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Okay, let's see. The next agenda item still on the number two is public comment period. I have one individual signed up to speak. Mr. Michael. You would come to the front, give us your name and your address.
Walking down the slope.
Pardon me? Walking off the slope.
I'm Walter Michael, twelve fifteen Artway Road, Blue Ridge. Speaking on item twenty, part of that proposal, I think it's great, part of it I don't, the part I don't like, uh, believe that applies with the presence of diversity, and also diminishes your ability to legislate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the next item coming before the board is consent agenda, which covers items numbers three, four, five, and six. Right here, I'm... Motion to approve, motion to approve. Second. Motion in second to approve consent agenda. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion is carried. Next, item number seven, that asks Mr. Daryl if he would come forward as you, uh, for approval of additional appropriations. And right after that, you have accounts payable related to cases, total accounts payable, you can send it right into that.
Is that me?
Yes. You had indicated that you'd like to add baby pictures for...
I don't know.
So we thought we'd get you a baby.
Nicole's... She's, she's supporting this.
No, your wife supported it.
We all support it.
Your wife's...
Your baby, really? I know, but that's a Polaroid light camera, I'll tell you that much. That's an old camera.
Tony's wife is the one that supplied the pictures.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
And kind of thank you, Mr. Willoughby. With respect to transfer some appropriations, for the month of August, or no transfer request or constructive appropriation requests, shit, they're intent past due, appropriation for regular appropriations being requested. Item one through four represent exponential reimbursements, donations, and miscellaneous receipts. Item five, number five, for receipt of CARES Act funds over the Department. Item six, for tenure for remaining previously appropriated, six thirty, twenty balances in each discrete fund. As for irregular appropriation being requested, item eleven is for the appropriation of remaining budget balance in order to cover this month's action contribution to family YMCA available. Item number twelve is for expense which can be reimbursed from CARES Act funds, while items thirteen and fourteen are appropriations requests not previously anticipated during the development of the FY twenty-one budget. Respectfully request that these appropriations be approved by the board, but are any questions?
Okay, any discussion, are any questions from the members of board? Some... Motion. I have a motion, I gotta say. Motion in second by, uh, Mr. Sloan, to approve. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Any questions, carry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Patricia, see the accounts payable for August two thousand twenty, total expenditures being requested for approval, for the general fund, including best service of all other funds, is combined one million, one seventy-nine, one oh seven ninety-two. Payable disbursements of note for the month are as follows, under the short accounts payable run, technology services, thirty-five thousand dollars paid to ESR I Incorporated for ARC GIS license agreements, under regular payables, under YMCA, around three hundred thousand dollars paid to YMCA, Virginia's Blue Ridge, for the county's year four action contribution, under CIP, county offices relocation, two twenty-eight, four fifty-six, paid to FNS renovations for creepy bell offices, this is project submission number three. Are there any questions or comments related to the requested accounts payable, financials for the month of August?
Any questions or discussion from the members of board? Of the motion to approve of... Someone? Say. The motion of Dr. Bailey, second by Dr. Scott. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Sir. Back to the next item. Please find in your pack the gen adequate consideration of resolution to set the percentage of personal property tax relief for Bodotac County for two thousand twenty tax year. This gen item concerns itself with establishing a tax relief percentage that will be used to allocate three point four million dollars in block grant funded received by the county each year to be applied as a credit to citizens' personal property tax bills. The base for allocating the credit is dependent on the qualified vehicle values. The test of deriving the two thousand twenty relief percentage was performed by a team consisting of Principal Revenue, Treysburg, and myself. For the two thousand twenty tax year, projected personal property valuations yield an estimated reimbursement from the state of fifty-two percent. This predicted percentage takes into consideration the composition of the county's vehicle value base and the fixed nature of the state block grant. Projected fifty-two percent state share results in forty-eight percent citizen share, which is the same percentage as we utilized last year. With that, request that the board adopt a tax resolution setting the county's personal property tax relief percentage at fifty-two percent for two thousand twenty tax. Are there any questions? Any questions? Discussion concerns? If possible, hear motion to approve. Motion by Dr. Scott, second by Mr. Sloan. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, sir. Sir. All right. Item number nine, approval of personal property tax relief, that... Two desks, we should, uh, give a case statement, say, um... Item number ten, Dr. Russ or Mr. Lee, approval of appropriation of three hundred twenty-six thousand, four hundred forty-four dollars and ninety-two cents of CARES Act funding, both schools. What idea?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Willoughby.
I didn't even recognize Dr. Russ. Don't forget who we are.
Uh, Dr. Russ and I appear as a manager request appropriation and allocation of the CARES Act funding on the amount of three hundred twenty-six thousand, four hundred forty-four dollars and eighty-two cents. This is funding that originated at the federal level back in the springing that was given out to states for current virus remediation of needs, and the state then used these fifty funds and worked them down by the Title One funding formula, so this three hundred twenty-six thousand four hundred forty-two cents represents the Bodotac County school board's share of its funds. Just a little bit of background information, we were required to submit an application to the state for this, for these funds, which we have done, which was accepted by the state, will be reimbursing, will be requesting reimbursement through the mega system as we do with the larger title funds that originally at the federal level. And then these funds will be used to support a couple of different areas, mostly cleaning sanitation within the schools, as there's a larger increase in need for that, obviously with COVID-19 going on. Some of those items are going to include hand sanitizer, wipes, there's a spray bottles, disinfectant solutions for spray bottles, so that you can clean surfaces, electrostatic spraying equipment for schools and transportation, so you can, uh, in buses as well, students can come on and off. There's a omni-shield product, it's a fiber technique which creates a seal on the surfaces that it's on, which helps eliminate risk of bacterial viral, micro anticoagulable type days. We're also looking into some bipolar ionization equipment for our H-TAC units to help additional air, plenty of air to come in the building. I thought of that, masks for cafeteria students, hand sanitation stations, those are the big areas there, and there's a little bit that we put in there for special education, as there was some needs for having teachers come in outside of their contracts before school started, for necessary IEP meetings for students and what needs they might have for that new school year. So with that, you guys have any questions? Have any to?
Do the members of the board have any questions or concerns, or less, or discussion?
Brayden, did you mention, Mr. Chairman, now, did you mention the ionization for anticoagulable? This might be used for that?
We're looking into possibility of doing that.
Okay. For each and every one of the schools?
For...
Yes, for their H-TAC units. Airborne.
Okay, any other discussion? Or not? Let's see, you need, uh, we need to approve this, I guess we do. Uh, your motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Sir.
Second, Mr. Sloan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, sir. We have a two-thirty, it's right at two-thirty, highway department, we have a day, is Mr. Barney here? I tell you, we're gonna be easy on you today, that cheesecake, it's great.
Thank you, sir, I certainly appreciate it.
Was that a ride, or was that just some sort?
There's a little bit that we've put in there for special education as there was some needs for having teachers come in outside of their contract before school started for necessary IEP meetings for students and what needs they might have for that new school year. So with that, um, you guys have any questions? Do you have any?
Any members of the board have any questions or concerns or less or discussion?
Brady, did you mention, Mr. Chairman, now, did you mention the ionization for anticoagulable, that this might be used for that?
We're looking into possibility of doing that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
For each and every one of the schools.
For. Yes, for their air.
That means.
Airborne.
Any other discussion? Let's see, you need, uh, we need to approve this, I guess we do. You have your motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sir.
Second, Mr. Sloan. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Sir. We have a two thirty, just right at two thirty, highway department, we have today, there's Mr. Barney here. I tell you, we're gonna be easy on you today, that cheesecake, it's great.
Well, thank you, sir, I certainly appreciate it.
Was that a bribe or was that just some sort? Is that a bribe or is that just being friendly?
No. I love the opportunity.
I tell you, you certainly have talent, talent for that, that is really good.
Well, well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
I sure would do.
See, the box is empty.
Wow.
It is empty.
That's fantastic, that's, that's really, really good.
We don't want sitting empty.
I understand, sir, I understand you very well.
It was conversation serious, sir.
I ain't talking about you. Thank you, I do appreciate that. As I grow older and I'm getting there, trust me, I'm getting old, almost thirty old, but, but I'm getting there. My passion has always changed over my life. The older I get, the more I like to cook and particularly bake, so I get to do all of that.
You have a talent, sir.
Well, thank you, I do appreciate it. And I certainly appreciate the opportunity to be before the board today, Mr. Chairman, here is the board, here is the board. Trust me, it's a beautiful day in Otto County, COVID aside, COVID here, it's a beautiful day in Otto County. I am trying to do my reports without paper. I'm currently working from home, full time. And uh, if I do things without paper, it really makes things a lot easier for me. So email, PDF messages, I'm, I give the really, really, the text message kind of the app. My problem is, the thriving is so small, it's a little bit difficult to read. So I have, I certainly, I brought my glasses and, and really, there's nothing outstanding about this report that, that we haven't talked about before. Certainly, two twenty continues, finally, uh, Bogus Bottom is open. We've been able to do the work on the Glenwood Road as far as our uh, soil health projects has, has completed. However, now we're going back to the things to our rail. That was a scary find. We're glad that we could find any time to, to save the road, that's for sure. That, that was a obvious, a scary thing to look at when we first saw it. But the ballpark road, that project is scheduled to end this month, we're certainly hoping that it will. There has been some delay of late due to the painting being delayed by weather. So the progress continues, but it will certainly slow. We are being advised that they're still going to be scheduled, so that's short, very short. And we, we certainly hope that they, they're able to do that. We're still trying to get the final list of our secondary routes that will be resurfaced not this year, but next coming year. Primaries, you see them, they, they're already in that, was shown to you here. And there are some secondaries on there as well that we'll get plant next, surface on that, that show, that show as well. The site plan reviews that we've shown on here, we've talked about most of these over the past three, four, five weeks. The thing at the bottom is, I would like to bring your attention to missing inventory of roads there. Uh, that will be on your agenda coming up very shortly, out on Sanderson where they did the adjustment out there. What happened was back in the nineties when they actually did that work, it was realignment. The realignment wasn't dramatic, but that created a change in the actual alignment that we then need to go back and adjust in our system. So we have the right number of miles and the right beginning and ending, so that's what that's all about. What should have happened, that should have been taken care of shortly after the construction was completed. Residences have a tendency to, to have a lot of movement in and out. And because of that, sometimes things just don't, just don't, aren't always picked up, and sometimes they fall through the cracks. This is one that's fallen through the cracks. And, and to be perfectly frank with you, there are several others that we had found on the compolet that have fallen through the cracks. We're trying to go back now and correct and, and do what we should have done back then. This is one of the ones in Otto County, we've got several others that we're working on in our other counties as well, but we hope to, hope to get those taken care of. I'll just skip over the permanent, we've been issuing a few of those. I will talk a little bit about Murray Drive. That project, the contractors should be moving in today. They should begin work this week to date. Uh, I have not been told that the utility poles have been relocated. We're going to start and hope that they do get relocated. The idea is that more for the school of, we're gonna have electricity. So we honestly believe that's our, that those things will get moved, things with the electric poles in the right place. If they don't, then that project is going to look a little weird when it gets done. But, but I certainly trust that that will happen. Some of them, both of them end up right in middle ditch. We hope that if they get relocated before we finish construction, which we think will probably be in October. Because what we don't want to have to do is we don't want to have to pay the contractor to mobilize to come back. That's what we don't want to have to do. And that's what we'll end up doing if the poles get moved and we don't have the, the road properly ready and finished. So that's, that was a decision we made to try to move forward, to try to move that project along, we know that the school's going, going to be important. We met with the contractor that's working on the school, that was an extremely good meeting, that was extremely encouraging. Contractor, they understand that we have a job to do, we understand they have a job to do, and we know that we have to work together. We all acknowledge and agree to that. We're working on a plan to provide, make sure that we maintain access, we're gonna maintain more money of access for construction, for the entire road build. The other thing that we're planning on doing is we're gonna put down the base, the contractor asked us not to put the final surface on it until uh, verity, equipment traffic was, was finished. So we're gonna try to push that off as long as we can. It may be that before they get completely finished, we have to do it because the asphalt plane will shut down this long winter. And we, we don't want that to happen, we don't want to have to winter that intermediate mix of what we're gonna put on, on top of that base mix, the whole of the base mix. So we're, we're trying to work together through that, so there's some things that potentially will cause the project to go beyond in October. But that paving work will be done outside the, our equipment contract that we have, um, we have built with the ready work. So we think that we can coordinate that, what we can do, what we don't want, that I guess we could, get ready, we, we don't want to have to winter that intermediate mix on top. It could probably stand it, but our preference would be to put the surface course on it, so when the school starts, when it opens and the buses start rolling in there, we'll be rolling in on that surface next month. So we got our fingers crossed and we're doing everything we can to make that happen. So coal probably start sometime in the spring, summer of next calendar year. And there was a little on the arterial preservation plan, but that has gotten pushed back. So not a lot of information I can provide to that. And then you see a list of some of the things that we're working on in the area, the eight quarter pipes. We're doing a lot of patching in advance of our work the next summer with the, with the secondary six-year plan paving schedule. That's what a lot of that, uh, work is being done for, as are the pipe replacements. What we try to do is the year before the surface gets put on there, we try to go out and check the shelters and the ditches and the corners and so forth and get them where they're supposed to be before the contractor gets there to put that final surface on. So with that, I will conclude and ask if there are questions from the board or if there are issues out there that the board knows that you'd like to share with me. I'll be glad to take a look at and do what I can.
Can you share your cheesecake recipe?
I can. I certainly can.
Dr. Bailey, do you have anything for Mr. Barney?
Uh, Mr. Barney, uh, thank you for the cheesecake that I've been doing. Um, Trinity, um, which is six seventy, uh, just before, just before you get to the road is through action. Come off of two twenty, there's a pretty large problem in there. I see it's on your list for patching, but I don't know how long that patching. I had two people here last week tell me about that thing.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely, getting that taken care of, yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Sloan?
Good to be with you.
Great, thank you.
Dr. Scott?
Okay, thank you for the cheesecake.
You're welcome, sir, it's big for my pride, it's my honor.
And I got half of those, blueberry.
Yeah, the plain and cappuccino, which did you like?
Cappuccino was, I was surprised, cappuccino was absolutely fantastic.
I figured, I loved it.
Um, so anyway, what I wanted to talk about, I know we'll talk about Sanderson here just at six oh five, just a little bit. But I wanted to find out, I know we had asked to, the culvert there on that one side, is it sometimes when it rains quite a bit, there's some spill over? Have we resolved any issues on that?
Honestly, no. Again, we remain rather resolute that the culvert is under a private road that we have taken steps to do all we can to stabilize our, our part of the road, not off the right way. So.
Okay, Mr. Flynn?
Couple of things, Mr. Barney, and I'll add my thanks, uh, to cheesecake. And I understand as you get older, you begin to enjoy baking and cooking and especially engineering, right?
Well, exactly, that's part of the process.
Absolutely.
A lot of these.
Yeah.
Exactly, precisely.
Absolutely, that's exactly what it is.
Does that mean Steve, we're gonna be getting some blue fruit?
Um, yeah, I may put myself on the spot there. But I'm out of this quality, I, I, maybe some uh, problems there. I've got two or three miscellaneous things. First one, I guess is an opportunity for revenue for the county that could put up some size for the new construction, which is Greenfield Street. Perfect place for, for uh, high-speed activities. And I've gotten several multivocal comments from residents about Greenfield Street between. Pretty early down about two twenty. And it really is, it's uh, straightaway, nothing there. So I'm trying to study, I'll go be last did one there, but uh, it's probably gonna be an issue. Fair enough.
Mike, I, since you can go get a little more information on this, make sure I'm taking.
Yes, it isn't a new problem, but I think it's getting worse, I'm getting more comments.
Okay, great, yes, that'd be good, thank you.
I notice here on the resurfacing, you have um gravel hill road, and that, that just brings a lot of related issue, it's probably been around forever, but you know, the site distance where gravel hill road intersects round eleven, just north of Brown Hill. The site distance to the right, to the, to the south, if you're coming out on Route eleven, it's severely limited, I would say. And I'm not sure as much can do about it, and I don't check, it's mainly the, the guardrail, it's a little creek that goes under eleven. But, but site distance to the south, as you pull off the gravel road, gravel hill road onto eleven. And then just a matter of curiosity, all the patching that you have, um, is that, is that just identified in the field as you go along? Or is that preemptively fine? All, all the patching?
Basically, what happens is superintendent area where people have arrived at the road and fail to identify the areas of any patch. And, and sometimes they do different kinds of patching, sometimes they're potholes, DC patch, sometimes they'll, they'll be called skin patch, which is some, uh, called a gravel placement. And then sometimes they'll actually take a load of, bring a blaze mask off, try to level it out, or try to get the crown back. So patching could cover a lot of territory.
Yeah, okay, I just, there's not necessarily a connection between when you patch it and when you resurface the gravel.
Well, no, sir, not exactly. We can do patching without the expectation that this will be serviced shortly. But if we're gonna put a new surface on it, we're gonna go out and shake up the patch. Sometimes we have to do, obviously have to do patching regardless of whether it will get resurfaced. And again, it, it could be any of those three methods, maybe it's a pothole, like we talked about earlier. A lot of times what we find is that, believe it or not, as soon as they're older, they can lose the crown. And so a lot of times we will go back and motivate asphalt down, try to get the crown back. Or maybe it has water issues. And sometimes what we can do is go in and take a little bit, adjust the grade a little bit, try to get this somewhere. Any more issues?
Mr. Chairman, you look at the lot.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I had one other thing, I apologize, Mr. Barney.
No problem.
I had been, I missed to say that uh, the mayor of Trout Hill gave me a call and he wanted me to mention this as well, as I do as well, six oh one fifteen, and then the, we packed for the I don't know, butterfly pushes.
Pollinator.
For it, the.
Pollinator. Pollinator.
Pollinator.
Yeah?
Yes.
One of the three. Anyway, and, and I'm just wondering, are we trying to work that out so we can get there, knowing service owner and come up to a conclusion of what we should do and how we should approach this?
The pollinator area or the?
Well, all of that area.
Okay. Interesting you should ask, ask that question. The mayor and I had some conversations we could follow. And what I have done is I'm trying my best to do a couple of things. One is to make sure to move along the plan that the district is wanting to use. I'm not really, I'm not really responsible for that. I wish that they would give me the money to say, okay, you take care of. Actually, that's limited access, that's part of what the right way indicates, so different folks are handling that. But what I have been trying to do is make sure that continues to move along. It is moving along. The area within there, what the scope is, could be something different than what it is. One of the things that is on the flip side of that discussion is that the state has, or received its credits for these pollinator areas and the, the lady in Richmond that tracks those things is of great interest in what we do over there as well. Now, I've explained that, you know, there's some difference of opinion about all the things that are like, and so, so we're, we're trying to work through her as well. Honestly, that, I'm not sure how big an issue that pollinator area is for, for the folks in central office and the state in general. I honestly don't know that. But it's important enough for them to get somebody asking questions about it. So as that thing goes along, we're gonna have to morph it into something and hopefully, once we start landscaping, uh, playing that's coming out there, hopefully that's gonna help. Now, the other thing that is of concern to me is the area within, say, a quarter from Route eleven to just north of, or, yes, just north of the Roundabout and along sidewalks. You may remember that back when this whole thing started, there was, I'll say anticipation, that the county was going to, to perform the landscaping in the area. That, that never did actually come to maturation. So we've, we've been having some difficulty with how we landscape, or how we maintain the landscape. And our, again, our problem is, we're not really good at maintaining landscapes simply because of the cost. Route eleven is a primary, you know, the primary is three times a year and, you know, that's hawcing, that is also a funding issue. However, having said all that, there is a great interest of mine that we do a better job, one way or the other, of maintaining that area. And one of the things that I am evaluating is the one splitter aisle that you come to the Roundabout is to put part of all that in hard scape and get rid of some of the landscaping because maintaining same country is nearly an issue than maintaining landscaping. That's one thing. The other thing that, that I actually can explore this week was, was it possible that we could give the contractor that we have to promote the primaries for Otto County, we add to their contract some additional roaming in there? Well, the answer to that was no, that contract comes from central office, it's advertised, it's lit the same way everywhere, so supposedly every contractor across the state sees the same advertised. Well, the answer to that was no. That contract comes from central office, it's advertised, it's lit the same way everywhere, so supposedly every contractor across the state sees the same advertisements from every district and every residency on the primary, so that there is incentive for them to, to operate within their bounds and not try to, and we, we have some of that about. So they're very protective of that. So that would lead to me two alternatives, and that is to do it with the area headquarters. And the area headquarters, honestly, they're not equipped to do that. That kind of thing is not gonna happen with a farm tractor in the back. Like, the farm tractor can have a bushel, but that's not good a way to need to maintain that area. All we need to maintain the area is a lot of mold and a lot of weed and some maintenance inside that ground about. So as I move forward, that's what I'm gonna try to do. I'm gonna try to fund some additional work in that area to do some of that landscaping. And, and what I may do, and I may ask the board if they'd be interested at all in joining us in an effort to, to clean that area up and produce some additional maintenance. Because by policy, by what they anticipate that I do, I've done, uh, I've done what the limits, and they get a little persnickety when one starts doing something one place, then somebody else thinks they can do it another way. But there are differences in locations and locales, and I'm sure they're aware of that. So I, that is the road I'm currently trying to go down. I'm trying to navigate that, and I've got my toe in the water, and I hope to come down the other side with my skin.
So good.
So that, that's basically where I am. I understand the problem. I honestly couldn't agree more. It frustrates me. I, my yard doesn't look like that. Honestly, my yard doesn't look like that. If it were mine, I'd maintain it myself. Unfortunately, that just doesn't do very well either. So I'm absolutely positive and passionate about trying to do more than what we're doing there now, and I'll do what I can.
Thank you very much. We possibly can have further discussions.
That would be fantastic, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Barney, I do have one other thing. I had sent you some information from Mr. David Redd, a while back. He was learning about feasibility of the white lanes on Route four sixty for the Bedford County line, the rural city line. I know we have wide shoulders, and that's what he was asking if you could do, or if you could just look into that at the next meeting. Give me an answer, or you can text me, let me know whether it'd be feasible or not.
That's interesting. For some reason, Mr. Barney, I, I have failed to absorb that communication, but he, he does my efforts on that in city. Uh, that's a, that's an interesting question. With Smart Scale, you know, one of the things Smart Scale is good at is this kind of thing like that. If this is a possibility, there potentially might be a way to fund it, if it would obviously be off in the distant, uh, real distant future. The Smart Scale applications, which praise the Lord, are open for this by him. In two more years, they'll be back, and it might be that by that time, we could work with staff to evaluate that quarter for, for white lanes. So that, that might be the thing to do, is we work with the staff to, to see how that would, that would play out. And go back to our traffic engineering folks and find out what might be required in order to do that. Do you wedge the shoulder? Do you, are, are the lanes wide enough? Do you strike? Do you both? So I'll take a look at it, yes.
Okay. I appreciate that, anyway. Does anyone else have anything to Mr. Barney before we let him get out of here?
I think, sir, I'll face the resolution. I don't expect her to be any excited when it comes on, but, but as an issue of the question, I think I'll just hang around with that and.
Okay. All right. Blessing. We appreciate all you do with the hill down here in the bottom of the county, and you realize that, the county, we appreciate you.
Well, thank you very much. I really do appreciate those kind of words, and, and I really appreciate the board talking, the question from the board, and I hope all of you feel comfortable enough that if you've got an issue with me, you know, text, email, or phone, it works, and I'll do the best I can to see what I can do there.
Oh, well, thank you very much. Some of you are probably wondering, Mr. Thing about the cheesecake, we keep talking about, Mr. Barney, that's his hobby, making cheesecakes. He didn't go by, so he said he'd bring us one, and he did. And, uh, very good. Mr. Gibbs, you know, I have a number twelve, consideration resolution to abandon or accept certain icing way associated with the Red Mountain Road, Route six fifty-four realignment project to the secondary system of highways.
Good afternoon. Uh, before we get started on that, I just want to give an update. I did go by Murray Road this morning. The poles have been relocated. Uh, the, uh, the lines have not, were not relocated as this morning, but I, I think they're gonna be relocated today, so I just want to give that update.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, the Route six fifty-four Red Mountain Road project, between alternate US two twenty and US Route eleven, was completed in nineteen ninety-two. And it was recently found that several right-of-way adjustments on the project have not been removed by the board supervisors, approved, I'm sorry, and the Commonwealth Transportation Board. They were needed to blow that project in order to allow formal abandonment and/or acceptance of these right-of-ways in the state secondary system of highways. The sections of Red Mountain Road, Sanderson Road, Tinker View Drive, and Apple Tree Road being requested in addition, uh, for addition and abandonment as shown on the attached map. And the odds requested that the board accept the attached resolution to disabandon. And the recommendation is, after the attached resolution, requesting the acceptance of the abandonment and/or acceptance of certain sections of Route six fifty-four Red Mountain Road, six oh five Sanderson Drive, Route ten ninety Tinker View, and Route six, ten sixty Apple Tree Road into the secondary highway, uh, system of highways.
We need to approve the resolutions, am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay, uh, the resolution is in your package. Uh, any questions on that? Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
Sure.
Any second, second. Dr. Scott Morgan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All votes no. Motion carried. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll give you a second, Mr. Scott, pick it. I'll give you a next one. Okay.
Right there.
Thank you. He's got new laptops a couple weeks ago. Okay. Um, we now have, uh, agenda item, at three o'clock, agenda item. I need the, uh, thing on the front. What agenda item is that? Steve, you have it over there.
Thirteen.
Item number thirteen. Mr. Morgan?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. David Morgan, I believe that's the jurors. Public hearing on a request for an improvisation, ten foot, thirty-one foot supplemental easement for AEP local county landfill property. You have a phone call?
There.
Next one.
Mr. Morgan, I'll serve as a, uh, a poor invitation to Mr. Morgan, but would be happy to try to get through this. Uh, Avast Power, uh, has an electrical transmission line from the Mount Union substation off of Catawba Road that crosses the Capitano property and extends into Craig County. There's a map that's, uh, was attached. They're requesting supplemental easement right-of-way, which is nine point eight five feet by thirty-one point three eight feet in the size located adjacent to current right-of-way, so this is attached to where they currently are, uh, in order to place a guide wire for one of the regular towers. So it's a minimal invasion of landfill that's associated, and of course, we end up working the AEP on a regular basis. As a matter of fact, we just got noticed that they've moved the poles on Murray Drive, uh, as, uh, while we're here, uh, described as a, they've given, so, they've immune us. So anyway, uh, it would be the, uh, the suggestion that this move forward with the public hearing, and that you end up approving this if you're, if you so felt desire to allow this to happen so that that easement from the guide wire could enter taking place, but that would be up to you to make that decision. So if you vote in the public hearing, then move forward.
All right. Any comments on the board members before we move on to the public hearing? All right, if not, the public hearing on this, is there anyone in the, I don't have anyone signed up to, uh, speak on this. Is there anyone in the auditorium that would like to make any comments?
I just was wondering, is that across from the cemetery at the substation there, at Mount Union and Catawba Road? Where is it at on the map?
Uh, there, it is on the map, uh.
It is on the landfill property?
Yeah, it is completely on the landfill property. It is not, I, I see no cemetery that's close to there. I, I'm not familiar with that. It's on the landfill.
It's down Catawba Road, past the cement plant on down, yeah.
He said Mount Union, so I brought it back. The last time it was cemetery.
That was the substation name, not, not the cemetery. Substations can end up being very far away from where you might think.
Anything else? You have anything else?
Yeah.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? If not, a closed public hearing, discussing some of the supervisors, uh, Dr. Lee. No discussion. Okay, this is Sloan, Dr. Scott Morgan, sir. Mr. Flynn, do I hear a motion there?
Motion approved.
Motion to approve, second to by.
Second.
Mr. Sloan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All votes. Okay, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you, uh, Mr. LaRue. Uh, we have a three fifteen for social services, uh, well, we had a problem doing that about twelve minutes early, look.
This is no action call for, on that, there's no procedural problem, that is true.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead. Hello, Mrs. Gavin, how are you today?
Hello, just a favorite member of the board. I appreciate you all of you coming today. My name is Zugeye. I'm the director of body, I'm in position services, and I've always taken care of the company, and she's my call investigator, and I have passed the process before you. Really glad you guys are probably gonna hear some of that. So I'm all over here answering questions that anybody has. Um, I'll try to keep this brief. Just kind of give you an update about how things are in social services right now. So right now, we have twenty employees. We do have one open position right now, which we're not gonna fill at this time. The biggest increase I said we had in the past years, we had a significant increase in number of children in foster care, uh, which obviously substantially increased our costs. Also, Medicaid expansion program started in January two thousand nineteen, and, um, they actually initially that would have about thirteen hundred folks that would be eligible for Medicaid under the new program, and that, um, as of August seventh, we actually have one thousand one hundred forty-two new Medicaid cases in Bogotá. So those are folks who didn't qualify for Medicaid before, and now they do, so, um, that's a positive there. Um, and because of Medicaid expansion, the state actually gave us some additional funding with the local match to offset the cost of that program. So the last three years, including this fiscal year, we got about seventy-five thousand dollars for the cost of running the new Medicaid, um, program. So what we've done with that, the first year, we did not use all the funds, but, um, I don't ever like to give money back. So this year, we were taking, last year, we took all the money from, uh, that program and spent it all on salaries for two hundred and twenty workers, and we'll hear that again this year. So when that runs out, it'll be gone, but if we don't spend it, they'll take it back, so I'm gonna stay.
So, is that, and that benefits the county there?
Yes. Well, it's, it comes off payroll, so that's a cost of the county, payroll, so, yes. Um, and I think you guys have a profile of reports in your packet. This is, um, from fiscal year two thousand seven to two thousand nineteen, so the state's always a year behind, but these are just some basic information that I thought were important to point out. Um, again, there were people getting benefits, and then, uh, the chapter of the services referrals, they've actually gone up from two thousand eighteen to nineteen, they're currently down because of COVID, but last year, they've gone up. And then the other thing again is the number of children that came into foster care in the past year, which is pretty significant. And actually, all the chapter services went down, um, in two thousand nineteen, which was surprising. Uh, this is the follow statistics. Um, I'll let John take that over. He can explain the follow numbers. That's your program.
So for the total number of referrals, that's basically a yearly amount, um, that we average anywhere from two to four a month. Cash payments are actually what the clients come back into the office and pay us based on the claims that we have established for them. The state intercept funds is, at the end of each year, I have to go in and keep everyone that has not made a payment in ninety days on a claim. And then the state will take, uh, we are like fourth, obviously, um, taxes and things like that are first. We're number four, so if, the, I say we, uh, social services. If we, if they have payments that haven't been made, they can get their tax, take their tax, take taxes, and apply a portion or all of that to, uh, the claims that they owe us. Uh, and then the treasury offset payments actually comes from the federal tax payments. That is hammered from our home office enrichment. And they do those, they start those after ninety days. If they have not made a payment in ninety days, they are considered delinquent, and they will start, uh, the, the process to take their, they can take, uh, treasury payments, which include their tax returns, um, any lottery payments, any, uh, social security money, they take a portion of that if they have anything outstanding that has not been paid us. And last year, we had a total of a thousand five hundred million dollars in stuff. There you go, forward. And we had, uh, two investigations refer to the Commonwealth Attorney Office. One prosecuted and was a currently paying restitution, and one had a plea deal and restitution was taken.
Do any of these people that, uh, have been prosecuted or have been charged with this, they can get that and lock up?
Not since I've been doing it, because typically, one of two things happen. They either plead, which typically doesn't end with jail time, or they give them a period of time to pay back, and if that is not paid back, then whatever jail time they were given and suspended would be served, but right now, no.
How does a lot of that stack up against several counties and states before you?
Well, it's, honestly, we don't have a lot compared to, like, other cities and larger areas, Richmond and things like that. Um, they're in the hundreds of thousands of cases. Of course, they've got, you know, several million dollars that they are owed back. So overall, you know, it's a lot smaller, because we're a lot smaller area. But, um, we do have, you know, for this area, we have, I think we have a pretty large amount that, you know, especially being recruited, because in the past, you know, it hasn't been, I think, when I started doing fraud, that was the first time anybody had been taken to court. So, you know, until then, they were just kind of getting away with it. So I think we're all in right, trying to get more of our money back.
Yeah, the last couple of years, they've been a lot more aggressive on, uh, going after someone's credit, uh, than fraud.
Before Carolyn started, we didn't have a fraud worker, so she actually does that and other things, but that's her main responsibility, so we're not, she's very good.
And you've got your own fraud unit, what's your calendar?
Well, Carolyn is a fraud. So we didn't have anyone before, so.
That's a fraud problem.
That's right.
Now, they had a name for it, now.
Okay, and again, just talk about the volume of children replacing foster care. Okay, and again, just talk about the volume of children replaced in foster care, just to give you some statistics out of that, but in January, we had four children in foster care, and by December, we got sixteen. As of July, we have one child who had aged out, let's say turned 21 and went out of the system, one was returned home, and then one new child was placed in the care just recently. So as of right now, we have fifteen children that are in foster care. And just to explain, you know, how, why those costs are so astronomical, obviously, six of the children that were replaced in care were basically teenagers, teenagers who had exhibited pretty significant behavior problems, drug issues, criminal charges. So when you have children like that, and you call a foster home, want to, you know, take care of a little baby and change the world, you say, we have a 15-year-old who's lying, cheating, running away, not going to school, not listening, and, you know, you don't see a lot of people while sharing the tech that way. So a lot of times, we have to place these children in residential facilities, and that's its potential cost compared to placing them in a foster home. Just to give you an average, we looked at the facility we've used in the last six months, and the average for those was about $10,000 a month, whereas a traditional foster care costs about $6,000 a month. So we, we, we are better to place more children in foster care at home as opposed to residential, but sometimes it's just not realistic, because we don't have a lot of options, especially with older children. So right now, we do have two children that are in residential settings, but the majority of those during the COVID, we actually were able to return home and then travel places, so the numbers were going to be absolutely different. Just the other thing to bring up is that we've also had an increase in child protective services, our child protective orders that have been filed this year. Actually, this number changed just this month, so actually, we have already filed nine to date as of now, compared to nine for the whole of last calendar year. And that just requires more time in court, it requires sort of a time schedule to be set up when you remove a child, initial hearing, there's two months later, there's another hearing, another hearing, and so it's really increased our involvement with the courts. Just in case there are coming up, the Fannie's First Prevention Act, that was really supposed to be started already, that's really to offer prevention money upfront before children are removed, we're kind of limited as how much we could access funds before this, but that's been delayed because of the pandemic, and also because if you take advantage of any of these kinds of services where they get paid, we have to have providers that are research-based, so that's been a challenge right now. Currently, the COVID has impacted us, we're close to the public, we're only seeing clients by appointment. As of March 24th, we reduced the number of people in the office to ten or less, there's a lot of teleworking and less schedules, training has been canceled, meetings have been canceled, and service workers are doing their business with foster children virtually instead of face-to-face. We did have one employee who did test positive, they're still recovering, but they did take their, a lot of time out of the office. The health department provided our workers with PDU, which was very helpful. And as far as the benefits for our, the state suspended all the review dates. For anybody who had benefits open right now, if you have a review, let's say due in March or April, they extended all those to the end of August. So basically, we're not doing any more new reviews, we're just doing the new cases, not new, not current cases. So that's really lowered the workload that we have, but obviously, as for all this, when all these cases are looked at again, our numbers probably don't all have possibilities of overtime. The other thing that the state did was all the SNAP benefits were increased to the maximum lot per household. So the way SNAP works is you're, you have to be an income criteria in order to get the benefits. Once you meet that criteria, then it goes to what your expenses are to decide how much your household gets. So what they did was take away that, they have exceptions for those costs, they just said it's household free, and this is how much the household free you get, you've got the full benefit, and that's again, still going on. So all of you are going to be coming to a end shortly, and we'll see how that impacts us. Also, the inclusion of telework has really led us to realize that we have a lot of IT issues, software installation, security software was outdated, so we all have laptops, and we weren't able to use them, and so we sort of worked a lot of those issues, but it was quite a challenge additionally to get telework started. And obviously, the pandemic highlighted the challenges we have. So we're actually exploring right now of the idea of possibly deviating from the state for IT support, we have some communication with the Hatch Department. So we're going to have to see what, what options we may have going forward, just because IT is, I'm not expert in, and so we have a following, I'm very frustrated trying to help from the state. And that's all I got, unless you have any questions about it, I mean, after the end.
Thank you for the board. Mr. Clinton, we'll start with you, Mr. Clinton, do you have any questions?
Yes, sir, I'm good, thank you, your problem. Really, it seems large and small, I guess, but I'm just, if I may, Mr. Carolyn, I don't know about the rest of y'all, but I'm not sure I understand any of this, essentially, you know, you see it, you know, you see it once a year, and then we get it, and I just wonder if it wouldn't be helpful for the board to get kind of further on social services. I mean, some of y'all know I'm a board, I never have, but, you know, TANF and SNAP and all that.
Yes, a lot of acronyms, we're government employees. We live on acronyms, we're government employees.
Oh, yeah. But I mean, the impact of things like, like you said, foster care versus residential, to me, they sound like the same thing, or I'm just, I just wonder if we'd be willing to spend 30 minutes with a briefing for you all, not like put us all down.
Sure.
Might be helpful.
Yeah, I'd be happy to provide, again, I know they're acronyms, I assume everybody knows what talk about, but obviously, they don't. So SNAP is food stamps, it used to be called food stamps, now it's called SNAP, and, you know, Medicaid is pretty self-explanatory, but, you know, it is complicated, there are government programs, and we have sort of, DSS, just to understand, is sort of divided in every agency across the state, it's sort of three areas. The first area is your admin people, there's the folks who answer the phone, and do the mail, and put in information in the computer, that's your admin folks. And then the second half of the agency is benefits programs, so that's benefits that people can apply for that need Medicaid, SNAP, or food stamps, TANF, childcare, all those programs. That's the other half. And then the other half of the agency generally tends to be our service workers, they're the social workers, who do adult services, child protective services, you know, they help people that need in the community, they run the, there's energy assistance, they can help with paying their microwave bill or something, that's kind of being the service worker or social worker who do. So every agency is obviously a lot bigger than Bogota, we're sort of half and half, and we're making a third, but that's what all of them are broken out to be, so the service workers, the benefits workers, and the admin folks. So we're the same as everybody else, we're just on a pretty small scale. But I'd be happy to, I actually put together a pamphlet of, you know, what do we do, and it sort of breaks down all the programs, and what the acronyms mean, and kind of what they are, but those programs, I'd be happy to try that.
Yeah, I think we do have a lot of them.
Yeah, it is difficult sometimes with acronyms, some of the meetings, I still have to ask, what does that mean? And she'll tell us, but is there any way you could just put a list of the acronyms and then what they are?
Oh, I've got about a 10-page list of acronyms.
Okay, I hate to put more.
I could probably do a main one for you, because we don't want all of them, but yes. But I'd be happy to provide, maybe I could just provide a copy that could be distributed to you guys, a little pamphlet to explain all the programs. It's only a small pamphlet, but it does explain what all the programs are.
And Mr. Clinton, were you asking if we have a 30-minute reading session or something?
Yeah, 30, 15 minutes, something, just kind of a review of how it's organized and what's involved. I think it'd be helpful at some point.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
One question that kind of bothered me, but I'm curious every year, poverty level, how does that decline, or is it too complex?
Well, the poverty level is defined by the Census Bureau, so we get these profile reports, and the state already accumulates that information, they just issue a report, this highlighted before, profile report is one for every agency across the state, so they do all these calculations, we don't really do them, but they give us the numbers every year, so.
I mean, has the base line stayed pretty much constant?
Yeah, it has been, yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Can I just add, I would say that we're still in single digits between 7% of people and 9% of children, and are we still, any percentage is too many, it seems like, and how can we go out there and type social measures? And the question, I show my life, these numbers and these figures, and just for like the YMCA, how did the YMCA, how can the locals, you know, areas help with these individuals? We have our food program that's going out to help these individuals as much as possible, from the school age individuals, but, you know, how can we, again, agreeing with, with Mr. Clinton, as I say, I believe that more information gives us more opportunity, sometimes, and that opportunity we can take advantage of in locality. So the other question that I was going to ask was, foster parent, there's a lot of rigor, I guess, to become a foster parent. And my question now is, how do you become a residential foster parent? Because you take a look, and it should be driven by money. I know that some people may be doing that, but it's driven by hope, and that's where we need those.
Let me explain the difference. So if a child cannot be maintained at home, and they are removed from home, they enter foster care, they are now a custody of our agency, of the state. So they're assigned a worker, and we have to find places for them. So the first thing we do is we try to find a residential, no, sorry, a home, a home, one parent or two parents that maintain, they've been approved as foster parents. We have a few foster parents in Bogota, but most of them, we can reach across the area, find maybe it's a rural county approved foster home, we can use that, or, you know, we don't have to use ours, there are also private providers that are approved foster homes, they tend to pay a little bit more money than the county does. So, so we have foster homes, they have a list of what we need in child, this is what they need, we send out, you know, a flash email, for better word, and they sort of figure out who can take this child. If we are not able to find a home for the child to go to, then the next step is we have to place them in a residential facility. When I say residential, what I mean is that's a, that's a facility, sort of like a campus setting, maybe you've heard of the Baptist Home years ago in San Antonio, that was a residential facility. So for instance, we had one young man who needed some substantial substance treatment, he was, you know, suffering a lot of addiction, family addiction on mother and father's part, so there's a lot of drug use in the family, and he was sort of part of that. So when he got removed, we couldn't really put him in traditional, you know, home, he needed specialized treatment, so we had him placed in a facility that did like a ninety-day drug, drug treatment, and they kept him there for a period of time. And then when he was able to be clean and making better choices, then he would say, but that's kind of, I say residential, that's what I'm talking about. Residential used to be a pretty common thing, the state really does work towards not placing children in residential facilities, they don't want that, it's not ideal. Children do best when they're in a family, so we try to reduce the number of children that are in the palliative care, I guess is a better word to put it. But that's, you know, that's the challenge that we have, we have a lot of children come through the court system, so you maybe have a juvenile who's before the court numerous times, they can't, can't follow rules at home, getting in trouble, the judge makes a decision to remove that child. So it becomes a challenge, maybe you've never even met that benefit before, now we have to figure out where they can live. So it's a challenge, but obviously, the expenses are enormous to place a child, not in our community, but the idea is to try and supplement the community if we're able to. I hope that answers your question.
Good, thank you very much.
Okay.
Mr. Sloan, do you have any questions?
Susan, on the third page of your.
Profile?
Profile, yeah. The Adult Protective Services Referrals.
Yeah.
You said you was kind of surprised at the 148 number for last year. How do you feel about this year?
I'm sorry, how do I feel about the number?
Well, the number's close, you know, like 2018 was 186, and then it went down to 148. Do you think it's going to be back up this year?
I, I think it's going to be less, only because of the COVID. I think that the majority of our service calls are down, is because the children, the kids are not in school, that's where stories come from, so the kids are not in school, we're getting less child protective services costs. Doesn't mean there's less abuse in the black, we're just not getting the same employees. I think adults is probably the same, but there's probably pockets of it that are happening out there, but these folks are more isolated, so we're not, you know, they're not going to church, so we're not getting a call about one of them, they're not one of the doctors, so the doctors aren't calling a reporter about the self and the life or something. I think, my concern along when I started was that Bogota's, I think the average age when I got here was, citizens was like 62, but that's, that's an older community, not a bad thing, just as, you know, I think in our adulthood, it's really been a lot. We didn't have it, we do now. But I think the numbers are going to, just because of COVID, are kind of going to be skewed, I think, for now.
That's a good, you have, I think you, you're very nice, thank you. Thank you, ladies, we appreciate you coming down and giving us everything we can do there. Thank you. And at this time, we'll take about a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back and we'll have the presentation from item number 15, which is a 3D presentation.
Oh, we've got seven, we've got to serve.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oftentimes, people aren't as familiar with the comprehensive as zoning warrants because we talk about it. Sometimes, a little less than we talk about zoning. So zoning came around in nineteen twenty-two for the state and maybe you all are familiar with the DILL rule and legislative action, but the really the main connection between zoning and the comprehensive plans, the legislative actions that are made by the board are pursuant valid as long as they're not unreasonable and arbitrary. If reasonableness is fairly debatable, it must be sustained. In Virginia, you have to have a comprehensive plan to update this to have a zoning warrant. And that's why it's really the most name important way to use control device. Look how it has decisions that are in conformance of the comprehensive plans support the reasonableness of a decision. There are seven things that the government bodies require by the state of Virginia to consider, as well as some additional elements of comprehensive plan. It takes into consideration present and future land use and public utilities. Those two are incredibly connected. Also looking at community facilities such as housing, schools, parks, recreation, and other public services, existing conditions of trends in growth, and then probable and future requirements of our county and the people that live here. It is a very public process developed in consultation with experts and the public. And it's composed of maps and pictures and charts and descriptive pattern. It is really, it's a clear policy guide. And all the components of the comprehensive plan or section of all of them really should be of equal status amongst all of the components between them and within the government's plan. It's very important that it's consistent. It also serves to control, like I mentioned, the location, character, and exactly the public facility or utility feature. If it is not shown on the plan, then it must be amended, or particularly the option for a commission permit that you all had a decision in the past for some types of utilities. In addition to all these things, goals and objectives and a number of strategies to implement, the goals should be included. Now, one of those strategies might be amended. There's only regulations in order to implement those goals. In other words, the comprehensive plan should be used one big legislative to do list.
Why does that lead to the public facilities and that's why? And that's where it ends?
In facility, the state requires a locality concern for the public, a public utility, to be reviewed by the comprehensive plan. And private utilities may or may not be permitted by the zoning warrants.
A whole normal setting. It's a public service corporation like ADP or Romo Gas. And they're supposed to also comply with the comprehensive plan. And the ways in which that work can vary. And there are also certain facilities of theirs where the state corporation commission is allowed to bring up their comprehensive plan. We didn't want the state corporation commission sent to me a big old pile of public service operation piles every week. And when if one was said, they're going to put a big old transmission line through the middle of County before you copy them.
And the definition of public, it does also constitute things, maybe operating a private utility. So no matter whether we get a broadband power, such power company, that's also considered a utility that would need to be in accordance with comprehensive, which is what necessitates that twenty-two thirty-two review and that extra administrative process that just affirms that you all have found it to be consistent with the company. All right, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Volo's name.
Yeah.
Did I say it wrong?
It's all right.
Well, I'll talk a little bit about the complaint updates that have been ongoing.
Thank you, Gold. I'm Mr. Chairman Ford. So we've been working through this comprehensive plan and update process for since twenty sixteen. We've approved several parts of it, population and graphics, the gateway crossing plan, which is a very important part for regeneration, the Cloverdale exit, the transportation plan, and parks and recreation and greenways. So what do we have left? We have, what we're doing right now is we're identifying key trends, incorporating objectives and strategies, which we worked on that hard through looking at what our round one of the public comments were. So now we're in the process of updating the future land use map. We'll then update the community facilities map based on land use and also our cultural and environmental recent subtractor. So back in twenty nineteen, my partner, Sir Jared, held five holder meetings. The main takeaways that we got at those meetings was that people wanted to see redevelopment of existing structures instead of old building trees to those new developments. They wanted us to evaluate, you know, how much is going on in the Dills Way that is leading to traffic congestion and some strain. And people wanted us to look at using Route Eleven and Eighty-One as an alternative to Two Twenty. And a lot of folks want to make sure that they're keeping the open spaces for the majority of the county, what makes Bonita so beautiful, and keeping the development more towards the southern part of the county. So right now, we're in the, we're drafting future land use map scenarios. So those scenarios will be brought to the public and we'll have our second round of public comments. Our goal is to start that in a couple of months. There will be, we will get comments through online surveys, virtual meetings. And we're trying to figure out other solutions, working with other people throughout the county, to figure out what's the best way to get public input in this current pandemic. Let me go over to the next one. We'll, of course, always look at the land use. All right, so this is the current future land use map, which is adopted in twenty sixteen. I apologize, the legend is not great on the document that we have. So basically, if you're looking at this map, the orange and yellow in the southern part of the county, the orange is medium to high density residential. The white yellow is more low density residential. And you'll notice the purple spot, that's basically where the dealable town center is. Sorry, pre-filled and dealable town center, stop that, to give you a physical kind of where we are here. So Renaissance was a consultant for the county that did a housing study to see where we could possibly create new housing opportunities here in the county that are more workforce based. So you'll see that Site A or priority Site A, sorry, priority sites A are the ones that are most ready to be developed or to be rezoned so that they can meet our housing needs. And then sites B are ones that are not, they'll take a little bit of war work to get prepared, but that we will be able to use going forward. So you see that actually, most of the housing sites already lined up with our medium and high density in the southern part of the county. You will notice that several of those sites are up in the big castle area. Maybe we'll have to work with the town to figure out how they're going forward with those projects. So what I'd like to show you is a couple of other scenarios that we'll be talking about with citizens in Bonita Valley. So if we were kind of useful, we are currently seeing, which is the development of the southern part of the county. And you'll notice that on the left hand, the bottom of the left hand side, we've filled in with white residential next to Tinker Mountain. And we kind of keep all of the development in that southern area. And then we also add more forest conservation area in the northern part of the county, which is what a lot of folks wanted to see. They wanted to see the northern part being more rural and beautiful. And then you'll notice there are two red spots that are kind of circled. Those are areas that are in, like we're risking, where there's a valley and not necessarily a mountain. And it's been agricultural for a long time. So, you know, how can we start to make new land uses that prevent development in those areas or increase developments that we're making sure that we're conserving those areas and then building again in the southern part of the county? And that black line, there's kind of like an outline of the urban development area, which is where we're trying to focus most of our, our work in the future, if we were to figure out our trends. Another, another thing that was brought up during the community engagement was the idea of using Route Eleven and Eighty-One as a place for us to expand. And so we'll get your votes on this one. There's at one fifty, sorry, One Sixty-Two and One Fifty-Six. You'll see two orange blotches. Those are areas that we think are within mile of that exit that would be good for mixed-use residential and commercial in medium density. And then that way, you'll notice down in the southern part of the county, we don't fill in that the area near Tinker Creek. So you're just seeing that we can move development to different areas. And it allows us different, different ways to, yeah, go on. Thank you, to see input from the communities. These are different options that they have told us that they wanted to see. And then now we can show them what they are and get their feedback for the third round of, of the future land use, which would be, you know, after this one. And that would be the final, where we come in and come get the adoption from them. And I'll turn it back over to Gold.
That was just a little bit of a kickoff for next round of, you know, community input. So this is areas that Peter Verhaad has really given us an opportunity to have a session with the community. So wait to see how, see how they relate to those images and then also give us an opportunity to keep those images. And then we'll just, you know, continue to flesh that out and help develop those strategies that I've talked about earlier and the goals and objectives to really to, you know, raise the idea for the reality in the coming years. And also, it takes into account the strategic plan, the other departmental strategic plans that we know about. There was a lot of opportunity for overlap. So we continue to work with the departments, the other departments and agencies to make sure that what we have is a really comprehensive. So any questions on that for us? Let's go to the next topic.
Questions?
All right, so you all, let's see, a few of you may recall that in December of twenty seventeen, we had really, maybe it was a late evening or maybe it's Saturday morning. No, it's definitely was late evening or Saturday evening, where we went through what to do if you want to get a building permit, or you need a rezoning, or, you know, you need to move some dirt on your property. Went through from the beginning all the way to the end of that process. And what we did is we looked at opportunities for improvement in our process. And how can we prioritize some of the things that we were, how can we better serve the public? How can we better serve the development community, the building community, and work through that? So we identified a lot of opportunities for improvement. But commercial permitting was one of the ones that we really felt like had the most need and the most potential to change. So we went through all of this in twenty seventeen, and I'm going to talk about the fourth step and the seventh step. And David Gibbons is here to talk about the other steps and kind of how we've revamped some of those things and how we're continuing to do that. So, you know, site plans, when they come to us, it's really any type of addition to any commercial, industrial facility, any structure. And what typically happened is that we would work with a designer, an engineer, or an applicant will come in and they would sit down with, you know, with E and S, the stormwater crew, and say, here's what I want to do. And then they sit down with somebody and we talk through those regulations. And then they talk to the building official and they, we, so everybody would submit plans to each individual reviewer, and they would take and review them. Then we'd send them separately to VOD and the Water Authority. And we just weren't connecting the dots the way we could have. So, you know, over time, what we, we really sat down, looked at other localities. We actually talked with the designers and engineering partners that we worked with the most. And we said, okay, here's some ideas. What do you think? How can we improve? And so what we came up with the most, what has seemed to really have worked very well is that we now have one central coordinator, Stephanie Sparks. She is coordinating all commercial plan review. So everything comes in through her, and then she schedules reviews. And all of the information that we have is provided in, we have technical review meeting. So prior to that, people may be scheduling a meeting to come in and talk about their project, or maybe they just submitted plans. So it's hard for us to understand what we were looking at and how that, what another department may have a regulation or some requirement where there might be a little bit of a conflict. And they might change something for, for a building official that did not conform to the zoning warrants. And so we had to get on the same page. So what we did is we've got these meetings now where we have, VOD has, every month, VOD comes in, Water Authority, Fire E and S, all of us, and we talk about projects together in every step of the way. And right now, we're evaluating every open commercial project that's in our list. So new ones, old ones, those that are just getting ready to file out. And Stephanie coordinates all that now. So she'll send out her question review. Everyone will provide their comments to Stephanie. She consolidates those. They go back to the engineer. They have a chance to address all the comments at one time and submit it back. So we don't have that overlap, right, or those different versions of things floating around. Seems like it's worked really well. And so then the permit coordinator or the review coordinator will help get that project out right under construction. So another thing that we found that's worked really well is we didn't have a great cohesive process for your reviews of commercial properties. And sometimes the zoning administrator would go out, take a look at, look at it, wasn't in the workbook. And sometimes E and S would go, and sometimes Fire E and S would go. But it wasn't cohesively together in the workbook. So now, and so now we can all, we all got it together. And we talked through things all at one time. So there isn't a lot of overlapping and opportunities for conflict to, to occur between areas and sections. So those are the things we did. And in twenty seventeen, we said, here are all the things that thank my help. So the only thing that we haven't completed one hundred percent is just digitalizing paperwork. So everything else that we talked about in twenty seventeen, we've been able to say that we've done. We sped up the process. What we did is we looked at our reviews and we looked at our permits. And we said, is this question or this requirement providing value to the applicant who they need to know? Okay, yes or no? No. Do we need to have that information to process a permit? Yes or no? Does the state code require us to ask that information? Yes or no? The answer is no. We don't need, we don't need to waste applicants' time asking for additional information when we don't need or certain types of, you know, extra paperwork or signatures or things of that nature. So we've gotten a lot, you know, and we've been able to put this online. The pandemic has really forced us to change the way that we operate. And I think in a much better manner, been able to eliminate a lot of the person-to-person interaction and India, a lot of stuff submitted online. So that's really helpful for us, for the development community. So again, this was something that we said, well, you know, all those other things done in twenty seventeen, then let's maybe take this out of all these things. Again, we've completed all the two of those. One is the fee schedule. We just don't feel like it's a good time to propose any changes to the fee schedule right now with everything else that's going on. So we can take a look at that, maybe we can have that back in the future. But right now, we're not prepared to do that. And then what we talked about also is expediting reviews for account development. Now, we do do that. And then we, we also wanted to, once we adopt the overlay ordinance, potentially hash track some of the reviews that might occur when design regulations are followed. So where are we next? So the next step is really just to continue through the feedback process and to really reach out to our, to people that we serve and ask them, how are we doing? And really drill down into the questions that we aren't being able to ask and we can continue. We know that there's still room for improvement and room for growth. So we want to be able to do that. And we also want to be able to give people more information on how to interact with our departments. So you all have seen the statistics. I'm really highlighting, this is our monthly report, really highlighting that even with COVID, if you look at our numbers in April, May, June, and July, you'll see that we have issued about the same number of permits. And we have had a little bit of a decline in our inspection numbers. But overall, the final permits, we've been able to have the same type of activity from our ability to process these, even though we went to a one hundred percent remote environment. And we did have a lot of things to do, hats off to, to the IT department for helping us with that and hats off to staff, because they worked really hard to make sure that construction can still go on in the community. You know, we do track our, our permit fees. And you'll see these numbers are down, and they're mostly down because of the apartment. So we had an apartment, the permit fees were in, you know, in eighteen and nineteen for those. So that's why you'll see that number. It's also a year-to-date number. Inspections, you know, again, if you look at last year's, and this is through July, we'll see that down a little, but not tremendously down. The construction value, there is definitely, you'll see the difference there. That does have to do with the apartment complexes that, that were filing out. Let's see. And then one other information I wanted to share, we were, we received a survey results that came to us from the regional chamber, and it was about the building permit process. And there were questions that were: how satisfied are you with the process, with the timeline? How about your staff? Were they helpful? Did they provide the resources? Did they hire the project? Did they handle? And then how satisfied were you overall? Okay, eight out of ten, eighty-six percent were better satisfaction. So excellent, very good in eight of those ten questions. Eight of the ten questions that we received was more of a hundred percent satisfied. So super proud staff for that. Also, there are other localities that are showing as far as their satisfaction levels. I mean, I just wrote a stat that we were able to have such great responses on this. So we continue, we're going to drill down, like I said, we do some of our own survey with the community, so we can, we can look even further down into some of these questions and numbers and get more information for how we can continue to be better. So that's all I have for commercial permitting. And if you don't have any other questions, I'll turn it over to Mr. Gibbons. He is also an engineer, and I started thinking, I think he likes to talk too. So it may be, it may be a trend.
What's your special?
Oh, I'm a grill smoker.
Okay.
Smoker. Good afternoon, again. I just wanted to bring you an update on the, if you remember back in October twenty nineteen, I presented a stormwater committee report with some recommendations. Mr. Clinton was involved in that committee. And I just want to bring a little update on where we're at and the progress that we have for implementation of the recommendations of the committee. Go wrong way here. All right. One of the recommendations dealt with existing subdivisions and basically provided for educational maintenance for stormwater facilities and education benefits of an HOA and just some outreach for some of these older subdivisions for established adjustments and updated maintenance agreements. And so far, we started compiling lists of some of the older subdivisions with reported maintenance agreements. Set up trying to do some inspections on those facilities. We have close to a hundred and some subdivisions that we compiled a list of. We started the inspections in the early spring, but we've kind of halted that because there are a lot of them are so grown up with vegetation and critters and snakes. So we want to try to resume that in the fall, once some of the leagues are gone, so we can get a better idea of how, how we're looking. And basically, we did some research, got some existing education material that other localities and VOD has came up with and pre-shopped them, see if we could use those for our own benefit. I figured wouldn't any reason to re-pretend to build if they had some existing materials that were pretty good to do. So we're using that right now. Also, for commercial construction, one of the recommendations was add a requirement for agreement blue and fee for commercial projects that serve less than ten thousand square feet. This allows for periodic inspection and allows us to have a little better handle on it. That will require a code revision and proposed code revisions in Section Ten Twenty-One definitions. In Section Ten Thirty-One Point One, the agreement blue of a plan that addresses the addition of using the agreement blue for small commercial projects. And basically, we could work with County Attorney's Office to finalize language of those code regulations. And at the end of this presentation, I will request that we allow for a public hearing as soon as, you know, September to approve those code revisions. Also, with residential construction, recommendation was require drainage land for subdivision flats and subdivision flat building permit applications. This allows us to proactively address how lots should be drained in pass, single-family lot. They didn't, they don't require drainage lands. And this kind of gives us a little chance to review that with the existing subdivision drainage plans and just make sure we have drained where it needs to be drained. And we implemented this policy with the latest, Santa Lake subdivision. And additional items were added on the E and S for more checklist, such as, you know, requesting the flat, existing subdivision drainage plan, and other materials that would help us identify areas for drainage. Another is the stormwater maintenance agreements and the HOA recommendations. Make maintenance responsibilities of the legal owners a matter of public record and encourage inspection with developer and HOA prior to transferring to the HOA. And provide information about maintenance responsibilities in county offices and on the website. And we'll also basically hand that out to the HOA when we have a meeting with them. And basically, we require additional language on the report flats to designate who's responsible for the maintenance of those facilities. And we have two subdivisions that are in area completion, cottages of Steeple Chase and Door Lake. And I've already talked with the developers about setting up a meeting with them and the HOA prior to that transfer. So the HOA is not called off guard on exactly what they need to do for maintenance. Also, for new residential home occupancy, recommendations for new home construction require more information with the building permit application and how the drainage will flow, general drainage plan checklist. Again, copy of the reported flats and review of the original subdivision. And we have implemented that with here lately. And, you know, if there's a available drainage plan, we get that. And like I said, that way we can review the single-family home compared to the overall subdivision. And we'll get a better product that way. Okay. Next one is, a lot of times, the, the, or the single-family home is ready to have a CO and the yard might not be stabilized for various reasons. If it's done in the wintertime, or, you know, a lot of times, it won't be ready, but they can get a yard established. So the recommendation was require a yard pond or shirley. That allows a homeowner to occupy the house. And county can require the yard to be established. And if it's not, you know, use that yard pond to do it. And that covers the cost of adding seating straw to the average side yard. And that covers the cost of adding a seating straw to the average side yard. Implementation require code change and that proposed code revision to section ten-twenty-nine, bond and other security for land-serving activities to address the requirement of the yard pond. Okay, for unregulated drainage structures, a lot of times, single-family homes, they will want that, flatten the yard out and they'll fill in a ditch and maybe put a pipe in it. A lot of times, that's undersized. And with it being a small area land service, they don't always have to get a permit through us. Recommendation was, in addition to an agreement lieu, require plans and calculations for any structures proposed within the drainage adjustments or PDOT right away. And that ensures that there be no adverse impact on adjacent properties. Provide a check and balance by asking, after, provide more detail for the structures and verifies that the structures have been reviewed and approved. Again, this will require a code change, proposed code revision to section ten-twenty-one definitions and section ten-fifty-three stormwater permit requirement extensions to address the requirement for middles, plans and calculations of drainage structures within the drainage adjustments or PDOT right away. Also, looking at lack of fees for single-family homes for agreement lieu. And we do require LDP for a land-serving permit fee for a building permit, or that's recommendation, require LDP fee. And require slightly higher fee for an LDP once submitted prior to applying for the building permit. At this time, you know, the suggested fee was fifty dollars for a single-family agreement lieu and seventy-five for commercial agreement lieu. And however, fee revisions are not currently being proposed, and we'll look at that at a later date. As Nicole mentioned earlier, part of the, one of the recommendations is the commercial permitting coordination, establish a single point of contact, and a technical review committee that's been completed, as Nicole mentioned previously. Enforcement, a lot of times, we have for some commercial, we have some restraint from or limitations on getting commercial projects to comply with the stormwater permit regulations. Recommendation without multiple notices and issue of stop-work order and withhold building inspections until compliance is underway or completed. And that would be the last resort for the most problematic projects. This is still under review with County Attorney, and I think due to some limitation within the building code, this may not be feasible, but we have to revisit that with County Attorney's And also, with enforcement, it's just instead of giving several notices to comply and inspection reports, we have the capability of issue one notice to comply, followed by a stop-work order if violation was not corrected. And we have implemented that policy already and have worked on numerous occasions and basically resulted in more timely response in order to get society in compliance with the regs. So the next steps are request authorization for the public hearing on the items that require a code revision as early as the September board meeting, if that's feasible. And then we'll come back and look at the consideration of a fee schedule, and we'll continue seeking feedback from the development committee. Any questions that you may have for me?
There's a board any questions or comments? Don't believe so, and I see you're wanting to authorize the public hearing.
That is correct.
I'll make a motion that would authorize staff to advertise for public hearing, planning commission, and for board supervisors. A proposed amendments to chapter ten, erosion incentive control with stormwater management of the auto type county code in their respective September twenty-twenty meetings. So I hear a second. We do have a second, Dr. Scott Horn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those? Most are. Thank you, sorry. Appreciate that. Okay, our next agenda item, item number, historic greenfield update. We have Mr. Preston here with us, that's going to give that update today. So, Mr. Preston, if you would come forward and we'll give you the, give you the podium.
Mr. Chairman, can you turn your microphone off?
My apologies, we keep cutting off the chairman's office.
Secretary, please. Secretary, please. Thank you for inviting me here today. I'm not forcing anything, just giving you an update on the historic greenfield. Think back from nineteen ninety-five, it's all a project that started for the, I guess it was an old idea by, by property and building a, the upper part there. But the county was wise enough to set aside and preserve certain buildings and also did studies, points of interest, archaeological things. And because of that study, it was found that there were several things that were worth preserving. And so the console was formed by Steve Clinton and Nicole was usually there to do an advisory to the board what to do with these buildings and what to do with the site. And so I am a member of that council and I'm a subcommittee for project development. So I think it was a wise thing for the county to go ahead and do this presentation. And on the council, we have several talented and knowledgeable people to help review the work that's been done, study the bill studio plan, that gave us an overall idea of what could be done. And up to this point, the last year, we have been planning and organizing, and a lot of that has to do with managing the area and giving purpose to what we're doing and figuring out how to utilize the buildings and who the audience might be, whether it's schools or tourists or whatever, so that it uses an idea of what the scope of the whole plan is going to be. So at this point, my task was to come up with a stage one plan for how to proceed with inviting people to come and see the area. As it is now, there are tourists and sightseers that come up to the area, and they're not really sure what they're looking at, but it's not really by invitation, it's just probably an opening for people to come and see what's supposed to go on. So we figured at this point, in stage one, we should at least have some signage and securities and safety, and also facilities for people to come up. We're not ready at this point to open the buildings, but what we'd like to do is have a way for people to go up there and indicate clearly how to go and how to see the buildings and have signage to show what they're looking at. So some of the points that you're on, I appreciate for here, one is access to the site. The county's been really good at providing maintenance to the site and the maintenance that they have already provided, including paths, really have formed the best way to go see the site. So I'm thinking that you go ahead and put the signage on this path and look at it a little bit closer to see if there's any ways to keep fencing and maybe include some steps, although the site is not wheelchair accessible. Of course, there is a possibility that you might be able to have handrails in certain places, but the mowing and the care of the problem area right now is excellent. So another to do anything extraordinary on the pathway. There, we had talked about having facilities in the first house, which is on the map, map of the paper, which is the manager's house, which might have been part of the foyer, property. And it was thought that it might have, you know, it might have even been an outside kitchen. And in that facility, there's already our Christian utilities. So at some point, maybe in site one, that property could be renovated for the company where people could go in and use the bathroom there and at least have a reception area where there'd be a table, brochures, and at some time, maybe somebody actually, a man in the reception. But that would be the first point on the pathway. Then as you go up the pathway, there's the kitchen, which is the outside kitchen for the, the main house that is running out. That kitchen really needs the fire pitch to be stabilized, and we definitely did some on how to, how to do that. It would entail tearing it down and putting it back together in accordance with the original There's a cemetery on, at the point on the street, that's on the right, that's family cemetery. Thankfully, I got out of the job of having to go down all night to maintain it, so the county's got a good job in there. But it is a point of interest because it does have a lot of neat names in there, and the names have historical data, historical information. And then the fourth building on the site is the slave quarters. And again, that would not be accessible inside right now, although there are neat things inside all the buildings that would be interesting to look at. But right now, we just want to see how much interest is going to be generated by just allowing people to go up there and inviting them to go up to these sites. If, once we know how much interest is really shown, then we can also go to stage two. And that will give us the information on the numbers, the knowledge, money we're looking at, how much fundraising we need to do. So that's why we're just right now focusing, focusing on stage one. There are priorities that we're focusing on for stage one. And so on the signage, the second, the safety and security, if you do construction during stage one, for example, on the chimney or the manager's house to purpose the interior or hit the roof in order, we would have to have fencing that we can still keep the people away from the areas that have been constructed. There's a pause on for security, if we can have cameras, but I'm not sure how important to have a video this time, but I do know people do, you know, do things that aren't supposed to happen in these areas already, so we don't have any other way to secure the property than the fencing. We have fundraisers going on presently, we're working to sell bricks and maybe put a panel up in the area. Between the cemetery, this kitchen and the slave quarters, that area is fairly flat and we saw bricks and that's a good area for events. You could have a damn, there, on a picnic there. We're also working on grants, but hang on, grants, Steve can address this better than I can. It's kind of a chickens and eggs problem because you can't apply for a grant until you know what you, what you're going to do with your grant. And you can't, you don't know what you're going to do with your grant until you know how much money you're going to have. I mean, you can't develop something, you can't make a big plan without knowing how much it's going to cost. So you try to apply for a grant and the grant says, well, we're only, we're only giving money to big projects. Well, this could be a big project, we're going to be the one committed to a big project because the county is costing, spending a lot of money. So that's, that's something we're working on, Steve can address that. We also have a committee, a subcommittee that's working on publicity, it's good to keep in contact with the local paper, send out flyers, put out campaigns to let the public know what's going on up there and invite them to see the place. And we also have a subcommittee that's working on presentations, so if we did an invite to a certain institution that wants to know something about historical greenfield, we'll have a presentation that's in the can, we can show them. Looking to, we're looking to complete this stage one of the summer of two thousand twenty-one. And as I say, we're currently having monthly meetings, we're doing it on Zoom. But I think we'll be able to put out bids for any work to please be done if there's other, other opportunities. I don't see a lot of followings coming out of signage and, as I say, publications. So it shouldn't be that hard to, to open up the public participation. And then at stage two, I have access to all the buildings and can interpret the progress. So I'm not focused on, I'm not focused on that right now, I'm just trying to see one document in motion. Are there any questions?
Any of the members of the board have any questions for Mr. Preston? Pretty tough to answer the board, how about you, with the cops got on?
Yes, I have. And I know that there's a lot of money that Mr. Park to fix some of the things that are present. I'm supposed to hear, the historical committee, how much money do they have to present for and talk to them? I'm just a historical committee in that market.
I think we have ten thousand dollars, twenty, we have ten thousand dollars and then that's management account.
That's, that's about right.
We have about twenty thousand dollars, but the chimney by itself, it would be closer to thirty thousand dollars. But we really don't have the idea, I'd say, if you don't open up the manager's house, you try to purpose that and just use that as a first point of interest, and you don't really need to spend any money on that. As I say, the county's going to go to the top and just create the path, and we want the path every day. It's fine for me, I don't think anybody would have a problem. If, if we had to put up a couple of local fences or something just to maybe a little handrail, something to stabilize, you know, on your way up the hill. There is a B sanctuary, this point of interest right there, we really don't want people going down off the path in the B sanctuary. So I don't know, that, it is, that's serious. I don't think that would require any additional funds. The brick fundraiser is, I think the money that's raised by the bricks would be the money that would be used to separate it and degrade it. So that's an additional cost to the county.
Yeah, I understand that this, you can probably tell, if you have a tree between the logs here, this is an effort that's really reaching critical mass. You know, we've been... We've been meeting now for, I guess, close to two years. And the same basic group is working. And we often have people fall off in a committee like this. But it's labor of love of the committee. And it's beginning to come together. There's plans of priorities and concurrent with that, we've got the fundraising plans and then ideas on how to make the public feel more welcome by the signage and so on. So we have all that coming together at the same time that in Virginia, really across the nation, the whole idea of the social historical effects of slavery are becoming more and more prominent. So we just get the sense of the critical mass, as you say, that is really.
Yeah, that is in the planning to be careful. We have it advised by council when the county, how to proceed with that. And be careful on what we plan, what we think we can do. But you're right, what's nice is that we have committee members that are experienced in this kind of plan. And so it's amazing the ideas they come up with. They kind of put a halt, you know, on some big ideas, people get excited about doing stuff. And then somebody comes up, well, you got to consider this, you got to consider that. And they're right. So we're just taking it one, like I say, one step at a time. And that's why we just look at the stage one. That will give us an idea how low we can proceed.
If y'all haven't been up there, I would encourage you just to go along. You call outside, you're really interested in us, relax, it's pretty, pretty sunny.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Preston, thank you for your report. Have a good day, sir. Next agenda item, cares, consideration of cares relief program for county farm operations. Mr. Pedd, will you share a link with us? And it's good to have Commissioner Reddy, Chris Wood, with us today. Y'all enjoy, good seat, Chris.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, the audience. Your agenda item is a consideration of the cares relief program for county farm operations. The federal cares coronavirus relief funds, which you all have been administering over the last couple of months, allows local counties to provide grants to small businesses affected, quote, affected by decreased customer demand as a result of the pandemic. If we consider by county's farm operations as small business operations as well, then we have an opportunity to assist them with the hardships that they've been enduring this counter year of the pandemic. What we are proposing for you to consider is that the U.S. Department of Agriculture's Farm Services Agency, FSA, they are providing assistance grants to approximately 150 by county farm operations through the coronavirus student assistance program. This is a program that simply helps them cover their losses for their commodity type operations. In June, you all approved the small business incentive grant program. And that grant is primarily focused on helping businesses with legal accounting and marketing services in addition to technology purchases. Moreover, that small business grant program requires applicants to have a county business license. The purposes of that small business grant program and the business license requirement don't really apply to our farm operations. And they also are experiencing, as I just mentioned, hardship during this pandemic. I've taken a look at the 2017 Ag Census. We have approximately 11 farms, at least in 2017, in operation, mostly by sales in beef and dairy. And the net income to our farms is essentially zero. It's a seller $23 per farm on average. So if we think about that, and particularly in light of this pandemic, our farm operations are very much in a distressed situation. So what we recommend to you is that you adopt the COVID-19 farm operation grant program that assists the county's farm operations with losses, not covered by the Farm Services Agency's grant program or any other federal state or private grants that they receive to help with their losses. It's recommended that you all appropriate $200,000 in county's care relief funds for this purpose. Grant applications would be accepted online during the month of September 2020. And we will set up, should you approve this program, that web address can get this program out in publicity between now and August 31. I'm going to stop there and ask if you have any questions about the concept of this grant program.
Questions remaining, one?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say thank you, Ken, for all the time you've spent. You know, we've had some discussions about this. You know, I feel pretty passionate about the agricultural community here in Robtow County. And any assistance that we can give, I think is, and will be well received. We spent some time talking with Farm Service Agency about this program. So we've been in coordination, cooperation with them to better understand what their programs provide. So, you know, again, thank you, Ken, Gary, and you all for working, you know, towards this. And I'd recommend that we adopt this one. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
If you'd like, I can walk through the process, but it's in the agenda packet. I would essentially read off of that, but that's your expression. Those are board's pleasure.
I'm good. I'm good. We're good.
Tom, questions?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Bailey, Dr. Ingrid, Director of Staff, received by our county COVID, actually, farm operations, is that correct? And you're looking for a second. So.
Okay, I'm motioning second on forward question. All the clear, say aye?
Aye.
I'll put the motion here. Thank you, Mr. Pedd. The next agenda item number 18 deals with the Rocky Forge Wind Farm Project. This is Pendleton, I believe, and we got this.
Thank you, Chairman, my member four. In May, when the Rocky Forge project was approved by the board supervisors, I'm sure recall all of those conditions that we read out loud in the public record. And we wanted to give you a stab update on this, two of those that would be pertaining at this time. One is the DEQ permit by rule. And I'm going to let you know that Mr. Charlie Johnson is here to give an update to you all on the project and all of the details. And just let you know, we've not received any information related to the permit by rule or any of those things that would impact that particular condition. And as you know, there were a host of documents required with the site plan network to be submitted. Just wanted to give the board an update from SaaS perspective that we've not had any communication related to the submission of a subdivision plan or site plan or any of those documents, like I talked about, that would be required in the permitting process earlier. We've not had any correspondence today. So I'll add, if you have any questions that you might have, or, you know, if it's out of your pleasure.
We expect to get those in force.
I would defer to Mr. Johnson on his timeline. Mr. Johnson's here, can speak on the timeline for that.
I mean, have to do yet, or have time to do?
Yes.
Any questions, comments? Looks like we're good. Maybe it's the only monthly.
Oh, yeah, and this will be a monthly update. So we'll provide us every month with the update that we have in our correspondence with Apex. So.
Mr. Johnson, do you have anything you'd like to share with us?
I'm happy to, if you have a request.
Yeah, I guess if there's an update to be given, I'd like to know what's going on.
Sure. Is there any actual, you have an update for us?
Yes, sir, I've got something.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood, come on down.
I should speak out for the mask, sorry. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for your leading the conference today. I know I was a little sidetracked on the agenda. And I will say there are a lot of things in flex with the project, which is a good sign. Couple just key items to the permit by rule, modification to our statement that is all for us, actually went in by the CTEX yesterday. So that is, they moved to the project. Upon their receipt, I think they'll receive it today, it starts in 90 to 10. The DEQ can move your application for completeness and authorize for the incomplete. We feel confident with our consultation today, what they've seen, that will be incomplete. But that is ultimately the DEQ's decision. With that, just to give you a break, heads up, we did get 72 public commenters on the application. I'm excited to say that maybe one of those were supporters. So we'll ever double in support versus opposition to the project or the modification, to the application. So let's look at what we call it, discuss with the permit by rules to that. Every comment that came in, we had to submit and have a response to that. So we'll put that upon our site and I could send it, we could do all, we could do all those responses. There was a plethora out there. So it takes a couple weeks to see this, but I'm happy to share this with you, your question. Just a couple of the big updates. The Federal Administration Administration approved 680 foot turbines, 18 of them. It was submitted to them for approval. That means that they aren't seeing a rescue to commercial airplane through the area. They can judge with that. Department of Defense agreed to a signed agreement with us. They don't think that our turbines would be an issue for me, they will take operations immediately. So that was a big piece for us. We recall the first time around, the shorter turbines, we not counting the greenbelt. Couple other things, we are finalizing our contract of biz for, actually, general contractors to construct the project. That's the big piece that we need to finalize before we submit all of our plans to the hold seat. So they will be kind of heading up that process. We'll see if we can get that out there in a few weeks. To answer your question, Mr. Chairman, I think probably October is the most reasonable timeframe to see plans coming in, early October is right. And that's also to let you know, we are still on track to start our tree cutting, which will be the first step in the process during the later time, 2021. So this coming back. And that's, those are some of the main things I have to answer your questions. I do understand that there's a lot of email traffic, concerns, questions on this project, a lot of eyes on it. We are, as always, open to hearing questions. We hope to respond to them. So please, I'm just here to throw any questions our way. We know this is a big project in Robtow, and it's a big project for our company. And we're excited to answer your question.
Gentlemen, have any questions? Dr. Pedd?
Thank you.
What's got on? Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Next agenda item number 19, a resolution submitted by Mr. Kerry Martel, who was today. This resolution was given to the county attorney for his opinion on this. It's just, it's making a difference. We've already got in it, we support it, it's strong, whatever. So we'd like to hear from Mr. Rock, if he could, on his opinion on this.
Mr. Chairman, this resolution follows on with our existing second amendment sanctuary resolution. As far as it goes, the board supervisors cannot mine a future board. So in a sense, this doesn't, this can't mine a future board to take or not to take any particular action. However, it of course would, if adopted, send a message of consentment of this particular board is.
Does it strengthen the other second amendment resolution we have?
No, sir. That resolution, this would cover pretty much the same ground. The big difference, I would say, is that the General Assembly hasn't acted a law in between, but that law was percolated through already when we adopted the sanctuary resolution. So this was all part of, all up into the same process.
Okay. Members of the board, any discussion on this, opinions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a few comments. I just, I think there's a larger danger here, and that is the government. And really, this just seems to me that the General Assembly has passed legislation that allows the localities to do certain things. For localities to say, well, first of all, we can't commit future boards, but even for ourselves, to say, we're not going to do that. It's just, I'm the government on top of the government. You don't have to say anything. And to me, by calling attention to it, we make it more prominent that Virginia may be a high, no control type of state. If we just let it go, we let it go, and we can do it all. Future boards can do whatever they want to do, but we can't influence that. And I just think it's, it's kind of given paranoia at the name that we're always looking over our shoulder these days, worried about some dark motors that are going to interfere with us, when those motors are probably not going to. And to have a government document that says, we're not going to do a future thing, just, to me, doesn't make sense and it's self-defeating. And it gives false security because it isn't doing a thing, is the kind of term. So it's just isn't, it's ineffective. So to me, why do it? You know, it just, it just seems like we have the counties wrong. We have bigger things to do than to give voice to our imaginings and to come up with solutions that are not working. So I just don't see the reason to go forward with it. It's kind of like, you know, I thought of it now, it's kind of like, like one of those old sides, no standing on the sidewalk. Yeah, well, maybe I'll still sidewalk, you know? It calls attention to a thing, if you want to be thinking of that. So I just feel like it's, it's kind of tools out in pursuit of this.
That's good. But then, I mean, that's great. Mr. Rock, I would like to ask, just to be clear, these resolutions, the one that's previously sweet passed, this one does not add or subtract from it in any way, in your opinion?
It doesn't change the, it doesn't change the sentiment that these five people sitting in front of you have already expressed. It's a statement of what your president's intent, that resolution was a statement of what your president's intent at that time was, which was not to adopt, which was to oppose the General Assembly making any change and that you wouldn't adopt any change if they did. You're being asked to say that again. If you wish to say it again, of course, that's within your prerogatives. What you might wish is to simply say, we said what we said and we're standing by it again.
Thank you. So basically, we're just repeating ourselves, in your opinion? Well, it was a consensus of the board that we just leave the resolution that we have as it is. And not adopt this one?
I think that's what we're getting ready for.
Okay, I think that's what our cabinet chair is saying. I would like to say, you know, we have a lot of citizens out here that want to do their part as far as making suggestions to protect our rights, our second amendment rights, constitution. I will say, but I know that every person on this board supports the second amendment, we support gun rights, you know, we support our sheriff's department. There's not going to be defunding of the sheriff's department like we have in some cities. We support our fire EMS. We support gun rights. You know, I've got guns, I think every one of us has guns at home. But I do want to thank you, Mr. Martel, for putting a resolution in and suggesting that, as your county attorney said, you know, it won't make any difference either way, you know, with this added to the others. So I think, just by consensus. So I think, just by consensus, that we will forego this one. And again, thank you for taking the time to do that. And we appreciate your support, the county, for our rights, and that's very important to all of us. Any other comments from the board members? Ms. Martel, you have, you're here, do you have anything you'd like to say? I don't want to put you on the spot, does it? If you'd like, yes.
I understand what the county attorney is saying about the asserted redundancy of the resolution. My objection to that would be, in the biblicalized year, when the second amendment sanctuary resolution was passed, the General Assembly had not given localities the power to make them gun control regulations. So at that time, it was symbolic, and this one does have a certain teeth, true. However, the General Assembly has not given localities the power to make those. And I don't think, respectfully, amongst the comments about cheesecake and big pictures, that it hurts to take thirty seconds after you've been given this panel, the crowd, and say, no, we're not going to do that on record, we are all second amendment proponents here. And probably we won't be gone after, you know, December twenty twenty-one. Some people won't be here after twenty twenty-three, you know, so there's going to be some changeover. And I just take it, every time there's a chance to go on record and say, we support constitution, we support second amendment rights, that we need to do that. But, you know, that's just my opinion. I don't think it's a false sense of, I don't think it's false security, I think it's important to come out, saying we care to citizens, this is a board. I don't think you have better things to do than reaffirm the second amendment when you can, I really don't.
Yeah, but you do understand that we cannot command what the next board does?
Oh, I, I understand that, but you should come out and say what this board does.
But if we do nothing, we're still doing nothing? I mean, if we don't support the code that they've got, then that's good, right?
I don't think it hurts when we have such a red family right now. I don't think it hurts to come out and and say that when you have the opportunity, I mean, thirty seconds, and it could have been a done, a done issue, we could move on, you know? But that's okay. That's what the decision is after. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You have comments, or, or? Okay, well, we'll move on to agenda item number twenty, EDA. Governor Bailey, I think we've got something.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it, it, it would be the board's pleasure, I, I would like to table consideration of that process, EDA point process, so that we can work a little more on it. So let's, let's not, if it's okay, let's pass on that this time.
Thirty days, sixty days, how do you do it?
Uh, I don't know that I particularly want to put a timeframe on.
We need to do that.
I don't think, I don't think there's time to part.
You want to make a motion on that?
Yeah, I, I move that we take the EDA point process consideration to that.
We have a second, all the board's say aye?
Aye.
All the board's motion, Karen, I would thank Dr. Bailey. The next item is appointments, item twenty-one.
So I guess we, A, we take a little?
Well, what that should say, the business passenger has resigned, we don't have anyone that's, we're recommending putting that decision yet. So, you know, we can say that that's taken, and we don't have a recommendation there. That's on number eight. And item B, there are several, in terms of several members of the Community Policy and Management Team, experienced September the first twenty twenty. It's two-year terms, do we have any one, do you feel those, or they want to be reappointed, or we know?
The current appointment recommendation was in your package?
It's in the, it's listed there.
Okay. All right, it's in the package, okay, I'm not going to try to find it, I'm listening. All right, any questions on that?
Thank you.
Okay, then you'd like a motion?
So the individuals we presently have is the Sheriff's Department, we have Jeff Skrzyski with Matt Warby and Alton. Mark, do we need to approve each and every one of those who go through, or can I, listen, and then approve all?
One question's bad. One question for all of us.
Thank you. I form our social justice commission, go with Neymar as alternate. Schools is Julie Baker with unknown alternate president. Due to a relation with court services, we have Shirley Thompson, Samantha Higgins as alternate. We have private representative Blue Ridge behavioral care care, and it's sure will, will. Kathy Brown, who is done, giving follow-up to her offense. And provider, representative of County Revolutionary Services, Corona, Tristan Thompson as a alternate. I make a motion to reappoint the other individuals and their alternates.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to reappoint those individuals. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any question on that? The board's say aye?
Aye.
And I'll vote to the motion, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Scott. Agenda item number twenty-two, committee reports, Carers Committee. You have a report on that?
Right here's the two coaches.
Yeah. So we, we've had one meeting and another meeting scheduled for this Friday, is that correct?
Yes.
And that, that meeting is, is up at seven thirty a.m. here. We've gone through approvals, the list has been provided. Do we need to name that today, as there were, didn't, we saw that last, last meeting?
You have that, those that you signed off on.
Right.
You don't have to actually do that unless you choose to do so.
Yeah, so, of course, you heard about the harm, added the farm portion to that today. What Ken and his group are working on. So, are there any more announcements that you would think to be warranted today?
The only, the only other announcement, I think we, we have taken possession of the van for the senior program, or we were in the process of that.
Or at least in the process of it.
Yeah, either yesterday, or today, or tomorrow sometime. So that's, that's been taken care of. Also, the committee for the small businesses meeting, I think, on Thursday afternoon, for the second grouping of that for approvals, and so that's taken place. So significant amount of things are taking place in the process, and I'm sorry about that, because a significant number of projects are trying to be brought before you, and we'll be discussing that more at the Carers Committee meeting on Friday or Saturday.
Any other comments or questions, or?
Just that, just that everyone has really been working hard on trying to get those funds taken care of, and get those out the door just as quickly as possible, to try to help with various elements of the pandemic. So really appreciate finance that's working on that, David, Cody, all of the department heads, various ones that have come up with creative ideas, and also the Carers Committee that's been meeting and trying to work on it. We do have some broadband projects that we're trying to get kicked off, and hopefully that will be getting done. We'll have more information on that as time goes on. Even working with the school system on some things, I think those, the Chromebooks actually came, and there was a news release on that, so that ended up allowing all fifth grade through twelfth grade students in Batoka County to actually have a piece of equipment to actually connect. They may not have the connection at their house, but they may have it down the road, or they may have it at some other locations. So anyway, all of that is taking place and pushing forward hard and fast.
Any other comments on the Carers Committee? Emergency Communications Committee?
The committee did meet on August the fourth at eight a.m. Our main discussion centered on the current radio system challenges, and what needs to take place to begin in pursuit of an unbiased evaluation of the current and future needs of a new emergency communication radio system. We do have an action item for you today. And that item is defunding of up to eight five thousand dollars that was previously allocated in this process for the RFP on issuance of a radio system needs analysis and system design request for those professional services up today. And being that that is coming from the committee, I move to approve this authorization for the issuance of that RFP for these professional services.
What second question?
Question on that, that's eighty-five thousand, the RFP.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, that money has already been in the budget as well, it's been, it's actually been rolled forward twice, I think. So it's not new money that would end up being, it's, it's already been there to, for this project, that never has gotten kicked off until we ended up having the chair being Mr. Sloan, who has been pressing hard to make this happen.
If I understand it right, these, as far as the system needs analysis, is trying to find out where those towers were, those things need to be set up such that there'll be no interruption whatsoever?
Well, and also using new technology to be able to take that step further to, you know, like in the risk, any parts of Blue Ridge, steel parts of my hand, I mean, RPD.
Mr. Sloan, we also, if I understand it right, we're presently on analog and moving towards digital. So that means that our reception can be interrupted immediately, so.
Well, I think on the average, Jason had to go today, but I think on the average, we're, there's about a tower a week that goes down for a short time. But it's still one. So it's, that causes a major disruption in all of the systems.
So all that means is any new comments?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion, second on the floor, all the board say aye?
Aye.
All right, then. Motion, Karen. And the last item is our social justice committee, I put it in the script. Lynn, do you have a report of that?
Yes, sir, I do. Here it is. You'll receive this in an email, I thought you might want a copy. Now, so there's one staple package, everyone did three, five packets. What brings you the one in there? You have already taken that, and I just thought it would be good to get the board's general intuition of where we're headed to this, and this is the previously named what was it called, racial committee on, on, on that, anti-race, anti-racial justice, I guess, I forgot what it was called, but we rejected that name. Let me begin, beginning last month, Mr. Chairman, you appointed me to, to form a committee to study principally the Confederate monuments from the surface courthouse, at the same time to consider a statement on anti-racism. So I was not forming this committee, and the process was not to make any one individual responsible, certainly not me, to be responsible for the names of the members of the committee. Instead, what we did was name organizations that have some kind of connection or interest in history, social justice, whatever the, the broad topic that we're looking at. Identify organizations like that, and then ask each organization to appoint a representative. So that kind of depersonalizes the appointments. And the second sheet that you have lists the, the organizations that are invited to assign a representative, and then the names of the representatives. The representatives is used kind of loosely, they're just appointees, they don't necessarily represent the position of the, of the organization. But they represent the, the galaxy from which each organization might be choosing people. So just briefly, the old field, and, and the attempt here was to try to identify organizations that had an interest in this, but that were battles across the board, none of them, all people, organizations, not in one way, and in the other way, I think the Supreme Ballast Group represented of the, of the county as a whole. So the Roosevelt Road Community was formed, Bill Tanger, which they appointed, the historical museum, the historic society museum, appointed Beth Lafferty. Batoka Genealogy Club, appointed Greg Riley. The Potter Hillery. Appointed Louis Sipper, the historic Pink Castle, appointed a couple, which is by Mitch and Bobby, Bobby and Tony. The Dawson Confederacy, appointed Harry Francis. VFW opposed, spoke up together, Buckhannon and Dale, Bill, Bill Price of Buckhannon. Batoka School Board, appointed Chester Adams. Town of Pink Castle, appointed Ben, Ben's. County by the beat, Curtis Brown, and Batoka County Clerk, of course, appointed Ed McCoy. So, so that's the group. Cody is on it as advisor, and I'm on it in advisory capacity. I don't have the vote, Cody doesn't have the vote, but we'll just try to keep it, keep it running. The other document, any questions about that, about the process for appointing people? The other document that you have is just kind of the ground rules, how we formed it, and, and how we feel we want to survive it. I'm saying we hasn't, had just made it so far, and, and some help from Cody, but this whole thing is subject to the Freedom of Information Act, so none of us on the committee really have met yet, because I want to get the board's, face the board's, this approach. Then we'll be able to meet and comply with the Freedom of Information Act. What else can I say now? I mentioned that the title says Advisory Committee on Social Justice and Anti-Racism Statement. To me, that was too heavy-handed, and, and it was too presumptuous. It's kind of assuming that we already had that problem, I would know that we did. So, you know, look at it, and there's a lot that's going on across the country. And look at some of the other organizations, governors that are on the, form similar groups. A common set of words is monuments and memorials. So I think a better word is the Batoka County Citizens Committee on Monuments and Memorials. That's the first thing we want to address. And that, that doesn't mean that we can't address a statement on, on, on race relations. So that's, I would prefer, I would propose, if we call it, Batoka County Citizens Committee on Monuments and Memorials. And we meet as soon as we can, as long as the board's okay with the, with the direction we're heading. So any questions?
Just, I mean, I'd like to tell you, you put a lot of work into this, and I think I appreciate, all of us appreciate the work that you've done on this. Very important committee, and I hope you cover the bases on this guy, put areas covered here, and so that we'll be successful in bidding. Thank you, thank you. Any comments or questions on the other single items?
I, I took a look at this draft, and that's just-
I took a look at this draft, and that's just, has a whole lot of work, a whole lot of dedication. I called up our administrator, I said, "Gary, did you do any part of this, or is this all stated?"
All stated, no.
Good, that's fortunate, but I can't believe, this is pretty detailed oriented, and very, very good.
I agree, but I think this is hard to do.
Thank you.
I think Steve's good, these types of things, organized, things like that.
Any other comments from you all?
I'd just say, Steve, thank you, you know, it's already been said, but I'll say it again, thank you for all your work, this is, this is very good. Do you anticipate more members than what's listed here, I mean, some other at-large kind of members?
We could have more, certainly, it was oversurprised as it is, but this was written so that there be no more than 11, I think.
Okay, so you got, yeah, okay, yeah, very good. All right, well, thank you again, this is our work.
Thank you also, Steve.
Yes, sir, good job. Well, that's all the items we have, and we have any comments on the supervisors on any other issues?
I do, if I, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to tell you and thank each and every one of our board members. It shouldn't go without me saying, this stuff right here takes time. It takes hours upon hours upon hours. I know that Steve is used to doing some of these documents and formats, but this does take a lot of time. You know, with the broadband, with, you know, all the committees that were on, there's been people asking, "Well, how much time does it really take to become a board member?" You know, is it one week a month? No. I'm on the phone, like, as well as everybody else is on the phone, with the members or administrator, you know, you have things that you have to do for accounting. That being said, there's citizens out there too that are doing a lot of work, and I want to thank each and every one of the citizens that are helping us. Gary, I want to thank you, I want to thank you and tell you that I am, that I believe in the Second Amendment and our rights, and I think very strongly about that. I am a gun owner, and I will support that any and every time, but thank you for taking your time, because this did take 30 seconds to do. This took a long time to do, and I want to thank you personally, as well as all the other board members, want to thank you as well for spending that time and bringing this forward to us. There's other citizens in this area, I was walking the track the other day, and here's this lady sitting there picking up weeds out of the truck, and she goes, "I am proud of my county, and I'm proud of what you guys are doing." No one will hear that often. What we hear is sometimes people are complaining a lot, but we don't hear very much of "thank you." But I want to thank, thank each and every one of the board members, the time and commitment they put into, we're not in favor, well, but I will say that you guys have been an inspiration to me, and when I come here, it's just absolute refreshing, and, you know, the dedication you guys put forth. And we need to make sure that we bring forth our children and the young individuals out there right now, giving them a reason why they're here. One of the things that supports me is to make my children understand, giving back to the community means something, and we should. It's not a fight, it's a team, and that's the way it should be, is that we should all be on the same team, helping to promote what we feel is the best, best towards our well-being, and that is Batoka County. We all believe it, we all see the benefits we've done. So, thank you all, thank you citizens, thank you board members, thank your county administration, so for all that you guys have done. I just wanted to fill that out.
Thank you, Dr. Scottmore. Any other comments?
No.
Okay, if not then, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for coming out. Gary, I'll shoot you a little bit, please.